Hey, I'm calling the meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please? Mayor, Council, I think one procedural item before the roll call, which is to note that Councilmember Hufdi is attending remotely, participating from Archibald Station, 123 Main Drive, Venus, Florida. And in accordance with the Brown Act, I wanted to note that the teleconference location was posted in the notice of agenda for the tonight's meeting. And also note for the record that we have a quorum of councilmembers present in person this evening. Councilmember Hufdi, can you hear me okay? Oh, I can't hear you. Let's fix that.
Yes, I can hear you very well.
Okay, great. And have you been able to hear the proceedings up until now?
Yes.
Great. And do you have a copy of the agenda for the meeting tonight?
I do.
And have you posted the agenda at the location where you are?
It is posted.
Terrific. And is your location reasonably accessible to the public such that any member of the public could participate in this teleconference from your location if he or she wished to do so?
Absolutely.
Great. And is there any member of the public there with you now?
No.
Okay, great. All right. Well, then with that, we've all noted that we can hear Councilmember Hufdi all right. And I would like to advise the council that because we have one councilor participating remotely, we do need to have all votes tonight by roll call. And with that, the town clerk may proceed with the roll call.
Present.
Present.
Here.
Present.
Here. Great, thank you. We do not have any presentations or proclamations today, so then we'll move to the town manager report.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Listen up to the mic. Just a couple of things for tonight. We will be having for the community a budget town hall conversation on revenue on April 24th, 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., right in this same building, Schoolhouse. It will be on video, so you can also watch it after the fact if you want. The town council will have a budget special meeting on expenses on the 30th of April, also here, also on video. Then the second budget town hall meeting for the community will be on expenses. It'll be in here, again on video, on May 7th, 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. Also, we're making available and posting all over the place and sending out a newsletter and so forth, feedback from the community on the town manager, what kind of town manager you want to see for the Portola Valley. That'll be on May 6th. It will be on Zoom. You'll be getting Zoom invitation on the newsletter, on the website, et cetera. It'll be from 5:00 to 6:30 p.m., again on May 6th. You'll also be getting the survey coming your way through the newsletter, through the website, and so on, about the same question. So we encourage you to participate where you would like, definitely to complete the survey on the town manager. And you can join in on the link. It'd be great to come to our town halls on the budget revenue on the 24th of April, expenses, May 7th. And the town council, May 30th, on expenses, so. Thank you so much.
Okay, so there's clearly a lot coming up. Can we assure the public that these will be posted on the website for them to, if they weren't taking them? Thank you. Okay. Next, we have oral communications, and these are for items not on the agenda or items mentioned in the town manager report. Is anyone in the Schoolhouse wanting to make an oral communication? I'm not seeing any. Yeah, that's not on this. Okay. And then going to members of the public that are joining. I just need to scroll in. There is one hand up, and that is 3056. Go ahead, please.
Hi, it's Dan Abreen, 4680 Alpine Road. Can you hear me? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. I'd first like to say namaste to our mayor. As many of you may know, Bruce, one of our mountain lion cubs, is now at the Birmingham, Alabama Zoo. I'm staying in close contact and hope the Birmingham newspaper will do a story about the Cubs of Portola Valley and what happened. Two hundred and fifty residents came to the talk given by the Oakland Zoo about the Cubs. Portola Valley was praised for its ability to understand and celebrate the idea of coexistence with other species. In fact, it was understood that the other species with whom we share this land need more land to help with inbreeding and genetics, which are critical to their survival. Gavin Newsom's father was a champion supporter of mountain lions. The state has no business forcing wooey communities to build because we share the land with other species, and we chose to live here, knowing and understanding that we celebrate coexistence. As you consider zoning this evening, include lions, bobcats, creek habitats, quail, et cetera, in your thoughts. That's why I'm here. And goodbye. Thank you.
Thank you. And the namaste comment was, for those who are not aware, I'm going to be doing a trek to Everest Base Camp starting tomorrow for a fundraiser for cancer research. So it's not going to become a common greeting here. Any other oral communications? I am not seeing any. Okay. We're going to move on to the consent agenda then. And do any, well, are there any oral comments on the consent agenda from the public? Are you, do you have? You, you, when this topic comes up, because it is an agendized topic, we'll call on you. But right now, we're just looking for people wanting to comment on the consent agenda, which are the minutes and reports that are listed. So we'll call on you shortly. I'm not seeing any other hands up in the Schoolhouse. I'm not seeing any hands up online. So do any members of the council want to pull any items from the consent agenda?
Town priorities, 5E.
5E? Any, anyone else? Mary, are you still on?
Yes, I'm still on.
Okay. All right. Just want to make sure you can hear us still.
I can hear you fine.
Okay. Do you need to pull anything?
No.
Okay. All right. Then can I have a motion to approve items 5A through D?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Flynn?
Yes.
Councilmember Hufdi?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
And Mayor Hafner?
Aye.
Motion carries, please.
Okay. So we're pulling 5E. Rebecca, what items would you like, or what aspects would you like to discuss?
So I had two questions really about this. Under the finance section, we have spoken quite a bit about the lease-leaseback or other temporary financing for the next couple of years, and that doesn't show up on the priorities. So I'm just wondering if that's something that will be considered through the budget process next month, or should that actually be on the priority list?
If I make through the mail?
Yes, please.
So specifically on the lease-leaseback, that would be covered under the priorities and under our, we have the, excuse me, the revenue enhancement ideas that we've been moving forward. I know the Finance Committee has also discussed different aspects. That is something we're still exploring. The priorities are meant to serve as sort of high-level, larger buckets, for lack of a better term. Does not mean if it's not listed that it won't be something we're working on. Lease-leaseback is something we have considered, and we haven't removed from the table since we haven't been given that direction from council.
But you're saying that it is included under the revenue enhancement section?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, great. And then the second question I have relates to land use. We gave a direction, I thought, last time or maybe the time before, about pursuing the four properties from the site evaluation ad hoc committee, and that doesn't seem to show up under land use. So I'm just wondering where that went.
In the prior conversations that have occurred related to other properties, that's what we're covering, that might not be under the priorities. But again, that's a separate project that has been ongoing. And just because it isn't listed specifically does not mean the work would stop on that effort thus far.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions? Okay. Any other questions from the council? Mary, you're okay?
Yeah. Is it possible to add that on to, on to this refinement directions and date?
Are you not comfortable that Cory's explanation, that it's in process? I want to avoid, if we can, redoing the priorities because I think everyone here has an intent to give that a lot of point forward. Okay. And Catherine, please remind me, public comment at this page on this item?
You already took public comment on the consent calendar, which included this item.
All right. Then can I have a motion to approve 5E?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Flynn?
Yes.
Councilmember Hufdi?
Yes.
Councilmember Walter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Hafner?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. All right. Thank you, Cory. Next is our public hearing on the rezoning to address HCD technical assistance letter. So for the person who wants to comment, we first have a presentation by staff. We have questions by council, and then we're going to open it up for public comment. So Terrence, do you have a presentation for us?
I do not, ma'am.
To make, if you can make sure that you speak into the microphone. Thank you.
Absolutely.
I can't hear.
Oh, we're just a minute. We have to get the presentation up and running. So Mary will let you know as soon as we're ready.
And Terrence, if I may, just make a short comment when you're done about the reason we have the two ordinances and the process for segmentation.
Absolutely.
Yeah, once you're done.
Discussion of both is okay, but when it comes to vote, we segment?
I'm going to be recommending segmentation of both the discussion and the vote. But we've got a process for it.
My presentation.
Your presentation is fine. Public comment is fine. And I just wanted to make a note of.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
I'll start. Cory's getting the presentation together. The.
It is up, so.
Cory, I thought she was going to be here. Okay, so what we're proposing is to make amendments to the zoning code to address issues raised by the State Housing and Community Development Technical Assistance Letter dated October 16th, 2024. As, each California jurisdiction, including Portola Valley, is required to have a housing element of its general plan. And the housing element must be certified by the State Department of Housing and Community Development to be in compliance with state housing law. I believe the language is actually substantial compliance. And, and so just a little background of the timeline. On January 24th of 2024, the town council adopted the 2023, 2031 housing element. January 30th, HCD certified the housing element as being in substantial compliance. March 26th, 2024, the town received a letter from HCD notifying the town that HCD had decertified the housing element due to a lack of timely compliance with the required zoning. And June 12th, 2024, the town council approved the required rezoning. The October 16th, 2024, the town received a letter which required that three additional changes were needed to the rezoning that had been approved. That letter is referred to as a technical assistance letter. The irony is not lost on me. So there are two amendments to the code itself and one amendment to the zoning map necessary to meet the state's requirements. The changes to the code are fairly straightforward and in fact are reflected in our adopted housing element already. So there's really no new language here. The state simply, for whatever reason, insists on it being located in the housing element and within the zoning ordinance. So these are technical changes. One is to add a table, to add a note to a table that indicates that a 2.4 acre portion of the Dorothy Ford Park site is included in the, which is already included in the housing element, shall be developed as high-density housing, and that owner-occupied and multifamily uses are allowed by right for developments in which 20% or more of the units are affordable to lower-income households on the Dorothy Ford Park site. Again, the Dorothy Ford Park site is already included in the housing element as a housing site. And this note simply puts this information in the zoning code, even though it's taken directly from the housing element. In addition, the state.
Terrence?
Yeah.
Terrence? I can't hear you very well. Can you turn, can the sound volume be turned up a little bit?
I can turn up my volume.
There. Oh, that's good.
My wife says I have a fluorescent voice.
No. Not this far.
Not a compliment. So.
Thank you.
Sure. Just back to this page. The code requires, the letter from the state requires that there are two small amendments made to the code. One brings information about the Dorothy Ford housing site from the housing element and puts it in the table in the zoning code. And the other is a permit, is a change in the zoning ordinance for the mixed-use zoning that requires that at least 50% of the new area of new development must be residential. Any non-residential development has to include a residential component at the minimum density specified. So in the table. So what that code means, again, bringing the same concept that is in the housing element, brings it forward, and it indicates that the housing mixed-use zoning has to have, new development has to be at least 50% affordable housing, sorry, housing. And it can be up to 100% housing. So if a property has mixed-use zoning, it can be as little as 50% by floor area housing, as much as 100% by floor area housing. Again, that standard is already discussed in the housing element. The state's requirement is that it be brought into the zoning ordinance as well. More challenging is the state's requirement that the Dorothy Ford site be technically rezoned on the zoning map to high-density housing. So first, I wanted to give a little background on the site. The Dorothy Ford housing site is owned by the town. So no matter what is done with the zoning ordinance, no matter what is done with the text, nothing can occur on that property. No development can occur without the town, the town council, making affirmative action. And there's many actions that would have to be taken, considering a lease or a sale of the property. And the town would have extensive public hearings and discussions about that before anything could happen. So the state's requirement that this be zoned is their attempt to remove one thing that would have to be done to develop this site. But just want to stress that this property cannot be developed if it is not the affirmative decision of the town council. So as you'll see on the map, this is the property. The other issue is that the housing element indicated, and the community has raised this issue to some extent, to a significant extent. The housing element envisions a 2.48 acre portion of this site being developed, but there is no 2.4 acre parcel. So we would have had to created a parcel to do that, which would have caused a cost and a delay to have a surveyor go out and create a meets-and-balance description for the parcel or even to subdivide the parcel so that could be done. In the process of considering that, staff has concluded that there is no reasonably rectangular parcel that can be carved out of this site that is 2.4 acres, and that doesn't interfere with riparian setbacks and easements and other issues. Therefore, we can meet the state's requirement by zoning the entire parcel. And then the table that I referred to in the past does, in the last slide, does limit the, it does limit the amount of high-density housing on that parcel to 2.48 acres. So, but actually identifying a parcel that is reasonably rectangular and close to what was envisioned in the housing element is not possible, given the challenges of riparian. As you can see from the slides, on the yellow line on the middle picture is the parcel line. And that parcel line extends even across the other side of Los Trancos Creek. So the site as envisioned on the far right of the picture is from the feasibility analysis that was done and included in the housing element. And it envisioned a different corridor for the, different corridor for the riparian corridor, riparian setback. And it also envisioned going into the scenic corridor. So this is the problem that staff's recommending that we solve by bringing the entire parcel in to meet the state's requirements, knowing full well that no development can occur on that property without the state making further actions. On a side note, staff would not be promoting, would not be recommending this action if we weren't confident that there would be plenty of opportunities for the town council to decide whether they wanted this project to go forward or not. Again, some more details about the challenges of the site versus what was in the feasibility study and how difficult it would be to carve out a site that is a certain size. And by the way, the state doesn't always make a lot of sense in their requirements. One of the things that they're fixated on is that the area, that the area 2.4 acres be zoned to the higher level. So even if we could show that a smaller area could accommodate the units, it would still not be in compliance with the state's requirements because they want to see, they want to see a simple mathematical formula that 2.4, 2.48 acres is designated as high-density or more. And so they're not responsive to that, to the arguments otherwise of whether we could put the units in, whether we could put partially there, partially somewhere else. The state simply requires that the housing element site that is indicated in the housing element be brought forward in zoning. And sorry for the long language here, but staff's recommendation is that the zoning ordinance amendments be adopted. The proposed zoning ordinance amendments are minor changes that are consistent with the housing element. Since they are consistent with the housing element, the housing element is already the law of the town. And this brings those rules into the zoning ordinance. And again, as I said, the Dorothy Ford housing element site is town-owned, and the actual development will require further action by town council. There are deadlines for progress towards the development of the site. A request for proposal would need to, this is included in the housing element. A request for proposal would need to be issued for the development of the Ford housing element site by January of 2026. The development would need to be constructed by January of 2031, which is the last year of this housing element cycle. The town will need to comply with this schedule unless the housing element is amended by town council action. Such an amendment would include, would likely include locating a different site and rezoning that property to replace this property. That's the basis of the work of the ad hoc site evaluation committee work. I think I've made staff's recommendation clear. However, there are a few options for the town council to consider. One would be to approve the rezoning, consistent with the recommendation. Two would be to direct staff to, instead of trying to comply with state requirements, to immediately and continually work on replacing the site. So in other words, abandon the effort to get consistency, consistency determination from the state. Option three is sort of a hybrid. You could approve the two zoning ordinance amendments, consistent with staff's recommendation, but not actually approve the formal rezoning of the Dorothy Ford housing element site. This action would not meet the letter of what the state was requiring, but the town manager and I would, if this action were recommended, the town manager and I would work to convince the state that this meets, that meets the requirements, that the language that's included in the zoning ordinance, rather without changing the zoning map, still accomplishes the objective. I don't have, I don't know what chance there is of that being successful. But if the town council made that direction, we would do our best. Fourth would be to approve the planning commission recommendation, which was to basically go back to the drawing board and try again to find a 2.4 acre site, which staff has already failed to accomplish. So in details, I wanted to indicate that for all of option one, options one, two, and three, the work towards replacing the site would continue going forward. The town manager met with one of the property owners of the sites, I believe, today. And we are both meeting later this month with the church next door. Thank you. I forgot the name briefly. But, and I'm meeting tomorrow with the owner of Village Square to try to make this progress work. So we have not stopped that effort while this goes on. And so those are the options, and there could be other options as well. I want to just say what the, I'm not going to go through the details of the options. I think I have already. The major difference in the approach is, option one is the closest, is the easiest path towards getting certification of the housing element. If we don't have a certified housing element, we are subject to the builder's remedy projects. A property owner could propose a development, choose their own zoning ordinance, and as long as they complied with our objective standards, And as long as they complied with our objective standards, the town would have no ability to, to reject projects like that. So, and, and, and frankly, our objective standards could use some beefing up. And I know that's a, that's a program that we're going to be working towards. So staff is concerned that, that the town could lose, could lose some local control of, over what happens on land. And so that's why option one, which is the smoothest, fastest, cheapest plan, path to getting certification of our housing element, that's why it's our recommendation. The, the other options, option two is, is essentially hoping that we can, that we, that we don't, that we don't have a builder's remedy project brought forward until we can replace the site. Option three is, is similar, but with the hope that the town manager and I can convince the state that in fact, the two, the, the two zoning changes are, the two zoning text changes are enough. Option four really would set us back and take more time and expose us even longer to prevailing, to builder's remedy projects. But just, just, just to make clear, the, the focal point here is to try to, as quickly as possible, get us in compliance by, according to the state, so that as we work on replacing the site, we are in compliance and are not subject to the builder's remedy. I, I also want to stress that state has other sanctions they could apply. They could apply a cash fine that is applied to cities, they've done that. And they could also, if they could, they could also through, file a lawsuit that would stop our ability to issue any building permits for anything other than affordable housing. So, so this, the state has not threatened the, those statements, but they do have that, they do have that ability. So, so going forward, at this point, I'm going to suggest that you take, that you, you make questions of staff, me or the town manager. And that, then, then you hold a public hearing. Town council should then discuss the, everything except the mixed use zoning. One public hearing, right?
Correct, we just need one public hearing, that's right.
Yes. And then discuss everything except the mixed use with the, with the entire council. And then with the council members that need to, the mayor needs to recuse for the, the mixed use site that would be discussed separately. And then an action would be taken on, on both simultaneously. And the, and when I say public hearing, of course, that means hearing from the public. So hopefully that is all clear, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have. And I do apologize, it is a, it is a complicated issue. And I'm, I'm, I'm attempting not to hypothesize too much, I'm trying to stick to the, to the facts. So I'll do my best.
Could you go back to putting up the options and while we ask you questions? Yeah, that, that's perfect. Thank you.
And Mayor, before we get to questions, I did just want to clarify the segmentation process. Yeah, thank you. So earlier in the process of the housing element, the mayor recused on all properties in the Nathaus Triangle due to proximity. This is the FPPC's, FPPC's 500 foot rule. It's actually 500 to 1,000 foot rule. But due to advice from the FPPC, the mayor is recused on those properties. So the properties are within the new mixed use zone. And so as a result, these, these changes are being proposed by separate ordinances. So we have two ordinances tonight. One deals with mixed use, the other one deals with the Dorothy Ford site. So as Terrence said, we can get, we just need one public hearing. So the council can hear all, any and all comments on both Dorothy Ford and the mixed use. There's no reason for the mayor not to hear those. But the mayor does need to recuse from the discussion and vote on the mixed use. So it's kind of up to you whether you want to, after the public hearing closes, whether you want to take up the mixed use first and you'd leave the, the schoolhouse at that point. And then we'd call you back in when that discussion is over. Or if you want to do it in reverse, I think it's up, up to you.
It makes very little difference. I can step out.
Yeah. So hopefully that's, that's clear enough in terms of the segmentation.
Great. All right. So first we take questions from the council of staff. And so I'm going to see if Mary, if you're there.
Are Mary? I am here, I am here. And I was a little bit floored by, I, I have a question about the, the not being able to do any, any building. If, have it so that everything has to be, does that mean you can't remodel or fix your kitchen? For example, is remodeling considered part of that penalty?
No, it is not. This would be discretionary, this would be discretionary action that town would be prohibited from taking.
Thank you.
A building permit would be non-discretionary.
Say that again?
A building, a building permit would be non-discretionary. Unless the state changes the rules while we're talking.
Okay. Well, it's, I think I'll wait until, I, I think that's about the most stunning question I had as far as unbelievable. But I, I think I understand where, where we're at. And I appreciate your, your time, Terrence, in doing this.
Okay, so you have no other question?
No.
Okay.
Could I quickly follow up on Mary's question and then look back into the normal rotation?
Sure.
So when you say discretionary versus non-discretionary, so anything that went, needed to go to ASCC or planning commission, would that be considered discretionary? Yes. Okay. So any of those, so any new project, for instance, could be stopped if the state decided to impose this restriction on us?
Yes, just, just to be clear, the, the state would actually have to file a lawsuit to have a court and put that restriction on us. But that's, that's how it, that's how it plays out.
Okay, but that would be the restriction. Thank you.
Why don't, no, let, let's take it in turn. Peg, I would suggest that you keep going with your questions at this point, and then we'll go back and forth.
So I have a number of questions. The first one, at some point, we talked about potentially surveying the field. And I realize the risk is that staff doesn't think there's 2.4 acres there to survey. But what's the cost and time roughly involved if we were to survey it? I'm, I'm trying to understand if we were to go back to HCD and say, look, we didn't have 2.4, but we have 2.2 and we can still fit 50 in. So I'm trying to understand what those costs might be roughly?
Honestly, I, I would just be guessing. It's, it's in the, it's less than $10,000, I would say.
And the time is a month, many months?
Well, probably three months.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. So I ask you about the building permits. So I know this is asking for a judgment call, but I'm trying to understand if we do the zoning now and then we go back to HCD and ask for a change later because we, you know, we say, assuming we're successful with, say, Village Square and with Christ Church versus delaying the submission and then just putting the new things in there because we, we got them sort of approved. Do you have a sense for, is one more likely to be successful? I mean, are we more likely to be able to sort of modify the submission versus saying, no, you got an approved and now you're asking for a change? Does that, am I clear on the, and I, I realize this is a judgment call I'm asking for, but I'm just trying to understand the relative difficulty.
No, I understand. The, there are a lot, there are a lot of variables involved with finding an additional site and, and getting it done. So that conceivably, the meetings that we're having could, could bear fruit. We could be, we could be ready to go bring something back to town council in, in months, in a few months. Or it could take a year. So, so the, the, the timeframe is, timeframe is, is different. So in that sense, it is much harder to, to, to replace the site than it is to simply do what the housing, what the state is requiring, sorry, I'm back up. What the state is requiring is that our zoning ordinance match our housing element. So if we're changing our housing element, that's going to be, require another level of review rather than simply doing what the state is asking us to do. And they're asking us to, to have a zoning ordinance that matches our general plan.
Right, I understand. I'm, I'm asking a slightly different question. I, I think it's clear that the community doesn't want to see Dorothy Ford Park and open space developed at all. Both baseball field and the open space. So I'm, I'm, I'm going down the path that we don't want to develop that. So we've found a new area that's equivalent. And the question I was trying to ask is, we already have a compliant housing element, but now we need to make a change because we want to do a substitution versus we've left it open. And I understand that leaves us open to builder's remedy. But we leave it open and then we sort of submit a new plan with the new areas rather than submitting Dorothy. Because I mean, at the moment, we don't have a plan at all, right? Because we're not certified.
That is correct. So I hope I understand your question.
Sorry.
I might answer a different one that's also, it's also interesting.
Please do.
So, if the, if the town were to take option one and that would, which would hopefully expeditiously get us some certification, we would be certified for as long as it took to find an alternative site. And even while we were reviewing an alternative site, when, when the state was reviewing it, even while that was happening, we would be certified and we'd be out from under builder's remedy. So, so just making it, making a change in the, in the ordinance after, you know, let's say six months from now, would not, would not decertify our housing element. We, we would have the, we would have the benefits of a certified housing element as soon as we, we got it. So that, I think that's the, the question you didn't ask, but I felt like answering. So,
Thank you.
The, 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 and I think the, the timeframe is substantially different. So the, the state, the state requirement, they told us in the, in the letter, the three things they wanted done. If we go back to them with those three things, the review's likely to be shorter. And, and it is also likely to be successful. So, so in that's, in that sense, doing anything else is going to significantly lengthen the, both the process of doing the thing, of identifying the project. And, and of course, for the state to be satisfied with this, they would need to see that site rezone. So, so that, that whole process would take quite some time.
Right, so I, so I totally understand your point about the, the duration. I'm trying to understand, we put the sunrise provision into the housing element. I'm trying to understand, given that HCDs come back to us with multiple requests, how difficult, if we are already certified, is it going to be to get them to allow us to change what they certified? Like, I'm, I'm following your path. Like they, we, we've gotten certified and now we have two new properties and we want to replace Dorothy Ford. Do you have a sense for how difficult that might be with HCD? Are they likely to say, yes, you told us you had the sunrise and now you've implemented that and you've done the zoning and you've done the other things that we need? But it's sort of at the same level of effort that we're doing with Dorothy Ford Park versus, oh, this is new and now let's review your whole housing element. You know, I, I mean, I could imagine it going different ways. So I was just trying to get your, and I, I get this is speculative, but I'm just trying to get your, your sense.
Yeah, I'm, I want to caveat that I'm speculating, but I'm happy to do so. So as long, assuming that particularly in terms of the acreage that we're dealing with is, is compatible, right? And, and the sites are as good, at, at least as good. And these are all things that we intend to do. We're, we're not going to be bringing forth a plan that is not, that does not meet the state's requirements as well. So town, town staff and, and your commissions will no doubt be trying to, trying to meet at least the minimum what we have. There are major problems with the Dorothy Ford, Ford housing site, in, in my opinion. And I think we can easily demonstrate that this, that the four sites that you, that you'd identified, particularly the two larger sites, are substantially better. So in that sense, as long as it's meeting the letter of the state's requirements, it should, it should not be a complicated process to replace a better site with a, with a, with a, with a worse site that just happens to be in the existing housing element. However, we will have to spend some money on a, on a feasibility study that'll convince the state that that is true.
Got it. Okay, good. Yeah, that's, that did answer my question. Thank you. So then my next one is, if we were to zone the entire, in proposal one, to zone the whole thing, how would we protect the baseball field? Like, how would we say, sure, we've zoned seven acres, but we're not going to allow people to build on the baseball field? And, and I get at some level, the town says, well, it's up to us to make the final decision. But is there, is there language that we can put in that says that, you know, it's this whole area, but within this seven acres, there's a baseball field on it and we're not going to allow a developer to consider developing that? Is that still going to sort of meet the, the state's needs?
Yes, I think you could add that language with no difficulty. So that you could add the language to the table, the language, I'll, I'll go back. Or maybe not. In the, in the 15.1505, oh, five, zero, you could add, you could add a section in here that said essentially what you just said, that, that, that this area with this 2.4 acres, this area would not include any of the softball field.
Okay. So then my next one is trying to understand builder's remedy a little bit better. I mean, obviously in towns like Menlo Park, we've seen builder's remedy and somebody comes in and is proposing a 30-plus story building. So builder's remedy could be a terrible thing. So my question then is, in Portola Valley, in order to have a builder's remedy, my understanding is 20% has to be low income. And that means it's multifamily? And can you help me understand a little bit? Like, if I have one, if I have two units and one unit is low income and the other is a bigger, but you know, palatial estate, is that meet the 2080? Like, how, how does builder's remedy get triggered? Because it's, it's not any property, it's, it's, there's some restrictions around builder's remedy.
Yes, so, and the, and the restriction is 20% of the units would need, but like I said, implication, implication is that that's a multifamily unit. But it's not stated, it's, it's a, it's a, it's an oddly drafted piece of legislation, I'll just say that. So the, the, the project to be, to be, to be, to gain the benefits of a builder's remedy project has to be 20% for low income housing. And if, or it can be 100% for moderate income housing. And a moderate income housing means affordable with less than 30% of the income of the, of the average county income. And for, versus 80% for a low income project. So in order to be, in order to take advantage of builder's remedy, it has to have, have those standards. In addition, in addition to that, they can also take advantage of the density bonus laws. So they could, they could also add additional density over and above what is, you would, one would assume they would choose the, our highest density unit, but they'd also get a density bonus on top of that.
Sorry. And I guess I was trying to take it to sort of the lowest, like if I built two units on my property, one was low income and the other was market. Is that based on square footage? Is it just, I mean, like, because I, now I have two units, right? I have one small unit and I have one palatial unit. Is it total square footage that would sort of make the 80/20? Or, I mean, I, I'm just trying to understand, like, how likely is it that somebody could actually do builder's remedy in Portola Valley?
Right, well, well, first of all, I'll directly answer your question. Yes, it could be, it could be a person who brought a, a project in who wanted to build a, a large market rate house and a, and an affordable, and an affordable unit. That would be 50% of the unit count. So that would, that would qualify for builder's remedy. However, they probably don't need builder's remedies to do that project. So that, so I'm not, I'm not sure it's a great example. They, they could probably just take advantage of the ADU law to, to do that project. But, but yes, you could have, you could have something, you could have somebody wanting to do a triplex or, or, triplex or four units on a location that the town would not allow because it's zoned for 10,000-square-foot lots right now. So you could easily have builder's remedy projects, and we hope not, because we really, we want the town's development to follow our ad hoc standards. But yes, you could have, you could, it wouldn't necessarily be a 40-story tower like Menlo Park experienced. It could be a duplex in the neighborhood where it's not appropriate.
Right, well, and I guess I was trying to distinguish it from the ADU case, because the ADU case zoning still applies. But in builder's remedy, then basically the zoning and the setback, I mean, a lot of stuff just sort of disappears if you claim builder's remedy.
Yes.
So I mean, it's much more flexible, and I use that in air quotes, but it's the, if you were to craft something that you could get under the builder's remedy, sort of, you know, tent, if you will, that loosens up a lot of restrictions. It could be four stories tall. I mean, there's a lot of stuff that you can do that just putting an ADU in would not let you do.
That's true. I was referring, an ADU below a certain size is able to waive a lot of the requirements as well. That's what I was referring to. But you're exactly right. A builder's remedy project has a lot more flexibility, as you said.
Right, and it's flexibility on the main unit.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So then I think my last question is, we talked about two zoning. We've got the mixed use, and we've got, just as we were talking for Dorothy Ford Park and open space. And you didn't really say anything about the mixed use. So can you just do just a quick, you know, what it is that the mixed-use part of this is, so that everybody in the public can understand?
From the state's perspective, mixed use has to have guardrails on it. They don't want a town or city to be able to say, well, we've zoned 10 acres mixed use, so we're going to have housing occur there. And then someone comes in and builds a shopping center with no housing, and that's undermined the housing element process because they took, they gave credit for those 10 acres because they were mixed use, but there were no guardrails forcing at least 50% of the housing units to be affordable, I'm sorry, at least 50% of the floor area to be housing. And also, if someone were to propose a fully residential property, that it be allowed. Our zoning code already says that a fully residential component is allowed. And our zoning code doesn't have a lower guardrail, and that's what the state objects to. This is not a comment they make just for Portola Valley. This is a concern they have for utilizing mixed use to meet their requirements across the board, because someone could just designate a commercial area, but without that lower guardrail, it has no effect.
Right, so our goal is just to tighten it up in the zoning code to match what we actually intended.
And it's actually, as described in our housing element already.
Yeah, great, thank you. I think that's it for now.
Rebecca? Okay. So I have a question both for Terrence and maybe Catherine as well. Let me pull up the, it's about the letter. Let me pull it up here. So the letter discusses the issues that they found problematic. You talked about that already. But it ends with this statement, and I really would like you to comment on it. "HCD requests that the town revise its zoning ordinance and general plan, or provide written documentation clearly demonstrating the rezones and general plan amendments meet these statutory requirements." So when I kind of go back and read the two things, or the three, if they're talking about it, they want us to amend MF 23 to add the by right issue. And they specify, they happen to mention Dorothy Ford Park site, so, but then they don't actually mention that in the paragraph at the bottom, per se. They don't call it out. So do you think that their concern is putting in that by right information into our MF 23 in general? Or do you think they are really focused on Dorothy Ford Park?
It is in general. It's what they request of any city that has these kinds of regulations. So it is a, they're trying to be consistent, and that's the reason for that. Even, and their consistency is also part of the problem, because they don't, they seem to have a one-size-fits-all approach, but that's another issue. But it refers in general. And by the way, their discussion of having other documentation, we've provided them a lot of other attempts to doing this. The only thing that I could imagine would actually meet their requirements beyond, except doing what we're doing, would be to actually have a development agreement with a developer that specified in detail. And obviously, we're not anywhere near that.
So in the language at the bottom, where they summarize what they want, revise the zoning ordinance, which would be adding the text into those two zones, and general plan, does that refer to putting Dorothy Ford Park into this new zone? Or does that not really mean that, when it says revise the general plan?
Honestly, I don't know why they said revise the general plan, since the only changes that they made were recommendations will be put in zoning. So that may have been a boilerplate that they dropped in.
So revising the zoning ordinance includes moving a property into a zone in addition to making changes? Okay. The second question I have is kind of related to what Craig was talking about. If we do move ahead with some version of maybe option one with change of language, so that we rezone Ford Park to MF 23, and then we want to go back later, and because we've found properties that are better suited, and we want to rezone Ford Park from MF 23, high-density, back to open space zoning, do you expect that we will be allowed to do that? Because I think SB 330 or something expressly forbids that. So I just want to kind of understand the risk there.
Well, you wouldn't be able to, you would be able to do it because you'd be simultaneously zoning another parcel. So the SB 330 that you're referring to requires that we replace the site with another site. So you would want to, I would recommend that you would do that action to remove at the same time as you added the new site. And by the way, it would be something that I would recommend that we coordinated with the state on, that we wouldn't be doing this just in the dark. We would attempt. They are hesitant to give towns and cities direction, but in this case, we would work really hard to get their ear ahead of time, so it wasn't a surprise to them. But back to your question, the, it can avoid those legislative issues if it was done simultaneously. And the sites were as good and as big, and it could yield as many units as the one you were taking out.
And then I had sent some questions in advance to Catherine, kind of about trying to understand the actual laws that they cite, the subdivision H, and, well, particularly HI is a little You wonder if somebody actually does copy editing when they write these laws, but H, the first sentence that goes on for five lines doesn't seem to have a verb. I mean, so I don't really understand what the state is asking for. "The program required by the housing element shall accommodate 100% of the need of housing for very low and low-income households allocated pursuant to Section 65584, for which site capacity has not been identified in the inventory of sites pursuant to Chapter 3, Subdivision A, on sites that shall be zoned to permit owner-occupied and rental multifamily residential use by right for developments in which at least 20% of the units are affordable to lower-income households during the planning period." What is the action item in that sentence?
I would say it shall accommodate. But I would also point out, I don't believe this part of subsection H is really implicated. HCD was kind of vague in citing, well, not vague, but they cited two provisions of this section, subdivision H and subdivision I. But I think really, if they were more specific, they'd be talking about H2, not H1. I'm not sure what H2 referred to. The H2 section, that's the, that follows, it says, "These sites shall be zoned with the minimum density and development standards that permit," et cetera, et cetera.
So can I ask, because it goes on to say 16 units per acre? Is that accurate?
That does not apply to us. We are subject to the 20 units per acre, at least 20 units per acre. And that's where we got the 20 to 23 units to the acre in the housing element and in our MF 20 to 23 zoning.
Thank you.
Now, I just asked because we have, in our housing element, identified 100% of arena sites. So I almost feel that this doesn't quite apply to us, because it seems to apply to jurisdictions who, in their housing element, were pretty vague about how they were going to meet their low and low-income housing. Does that make any sense?
So your question is, what's the basis for that applying?
Yes, yes.
I don't know if we have a figure. Yeah, I would say that this subsection HI is not really pertinent to what we're doing tonight. I think it refers to, in, going back to the housing element phase, there is a site inventory where we have sites that can accommodate a certain, you know, we anticipate will accommodate a certain number of units during the arena cycle. And where there's a shortfall there, then we need to redesignate and rezone additional sites, which is what we did as part of this cycle. So I, yeah, I guess I agree with you that it's very poorly worded, but I don't think that was a specific section that they were relying on to justify their request for the revisions for this, the by right in project, yes.
Okay. And then we are depending on our definition of net acre as the gross acreage minus areas not available for development, such as conservation easements, access easement seismic setbacks, riparian setbacks, sensitive habitats, or other similar constraints. So my question is, does HCD allow our scenic setback in that, as a list of an allowable constraint for a property?
I don't, I can't, I don't know, I don't know whether they'd accept that. They do, they did want to see a feasibility analysis of this as a part of the housing element, which was completed. And so they have a fair amount of latitude in looking at whether the site is feasible. And based on that analysis, they found it feasible. But as I said, there are some problems with that analysis.
Okay. You talked, you answered a bunch of questions for Craig about builder's remedy, and I'm just wondering, does the town have any type of protections against a builder's remedy in terms of limiting size or scope? Or are there new, I think there's some new laws that got passed this year about trying to contain it a little bit, but does that help us at all for the palatial estate situation or the high-rise?
Well, I'll leave it to the lawyers to give a definitive answer, but I would say the changes that were made actually worsen it for the cities. They actually strengthen. The builder's remedy law is actually 30 years old. It hasn't been used, and it's very vague. There's a lot of vagueness. So the attempt, the legislation that was done late last year was actually intended to strengthen the builder's remedy for builders, at least, and that's my read of those legislative pieces. And answer to your first question, what the town can do to protect itself from builder's remedy is to have detailed, objective standards in our zoning codes. However, it still allows someone, it still allows someone to choose their own zoning district. So you could have a two-acre parcel in an area that requires, you know, 30,000-square-foot lots, and you could choose to have a mixed-use zoning district or a high-density zoning district, and the town can't control that. As long as you met the standards of that district, the town would not be able to object to it. But having detailed, objective standards would help, because the town can require that someone complies with those objective standards.
But we don't have them, and we won't have them anytime soon, correct?
We have some, but we could beat that up.
Okay. For the MU 6 zoning issue, I think we only have two or three commercial properties that actually apply there. Could you update us on the situation with Country Corners? I believe they've gone through a zoning lot split. Is that correct?
What person?
Because, Country Corners.
Which is where?
It's at the corner of Alpine and Nathor's. Isn't it called Country Corners?
It might be, but not to my knowledge. Anyway, Terrence, you now know what area it is.
In any case, I'm not familiar, I don't have the background. I can't answer that to them.
Oh, I thought I just went through planning like a month ago, but maybe I'm mistaken. Okay. So in the situation where that request to split that lot with the back half where the tennis court is becoming 100% residential, and the front half is 100% commercial right now, what would be the restrictions on that property with this new change for the MU 6, for the commercial portion in the front?
Sure. Well, if it's one parcel, if it's one parcel, then new development would have to be 50% residential. So, or at least 50% residential, it could be up to 100%. So if it's a, if they created a new parcel, and I am familiar with the parcel, I never knew by that name before, but I am familiar with that project. If the parcel is split off separately, then at least 50% of the area would have to be housing and as much as 100%. I believe what's proposed is that new parcel is 100% residential, so it would be in compliance.
But the front half is more what I'm concerned about is, the developer, the owner has 100% commercial right now. He had, when his lot was put into the MU 6, I think the language said that he retained all of the AP rights. So how does that?
And that's still true. Only if he decided to develop something new, he or she decided to develop something new, would they be required to have 50% of it be affordable? I'm not, not affordable, but housing. So if they were to put a second, they were to put a second story on their commercial, then at least half of that new square footage would have to be housing.
Okay.
But if they don't do anything, they'd simply continue using their commercial property, even renovating it, changing tenants, all that is something they can continue to do for as long as they want.
So for the MU 6 change, as I read the law, it doesn't seem to me that it applies to us at all, but I do understand, based on what you said, that it's standard practice. Are there no situations where there's a mixed use that doesn't require 50%, instead has a minimum of 25%? That would comply, or that, I don't know, that would be an option?
I am not familiar with any, but I'm sure it's possible. But unfortunately, the state has made it pretty clear what they're looking for. In order to count these sites towards our arena, they want to see that it's at least 50% new construction is happening.
And for the new sites we're considering through the site selection, would an ISMD be required for those sites? Or EIR?
Very hard to say at this time. It really depends a lot on the sites. But some SEQA analysis, there may be categorical exemptions that apply, but, and the state is fairly strong on categorical exemptions for housing projects. So it's entirely possible that it could be a simple process, but there is SEQA to clear for any new site that wasn't already evaluated in the housing.
Okay.
The Christchurch property was evaluated in the housing element, just not for as many units as we hope to have there.
And you answered already the question. And you answered already the question from Craig about changing the language. But could we, for, I'm going back to MF23 and Ford Field, Ford Park. Could we just simply say in the language that the area would be bounded on the south by the edge of the baseball field? And, you know, we could say on the east by the creek setback, and on the west by Alpine Road.
Yes, you could.
Because that would be a 4.9 acre.
Well, I'm not so sure of that, but because of the creek setback, it's shown in different places and different mapping.
Right, sorry, that would have included the creek setback. But, yeah, it's definitely more than 2.48.
But yes, the town council can add any descriptors that they wish.
And then, the other question I have is, they want us to add the use-by-right section into the ordinance. Can we actually write out exactly what that means based on what's in the code? In other words, it means that the local government's review may not require a conditional use permit, da-da-da-da, the whole thing that's in the actual regulation, as well as, say, use-by-right does not exempt the use from design review?
Again, yes, you could add whatever language you wish.
Could I just make one clarification there? Because I don't think we're proposing a staff to change anything about the language for use-by-right because it's already in that MF23 zone. So, we're not changing that language. The staff proposal is simply to just put Dorothy Ford Park site in that zone.
Is that the case? Is the language already by right?
Yes.
In our zone, zoning? Oh, okay. I think that's my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want some clarification on some process questions. You talked about the penalties for local governments failing to meet state housing law. I did some research, so some of it looked a little bit stale, so I'm just confirming where we're at. So, for instance, you talked about builder's remedy. There's been a lot of discussion. You talked about local governments are subject to court-issued judgments directing jurisdictions to bring a housing element into substantial compliance with state housing element law. And if a jurisdiction's housing element continues to be found out of compliance, courts can fine jurisdictions up to 100,000 per month, and if they are not paid, multiply that by a factor of six. Is that still in force?
That is my understanding, yes.
Great. Well, not great, but good to know. Thank you. Can I also be clear? You said the state could sue us, the city, the town, excuse me. It also said, what I found from ABAG, my source, Association of Bay Area Governments, that developers can sue. That third parties can sue, such as YMB Law.
That's correct.
Still the case? Okay, thank you. You also, it also cites that individuals can sue.
That's also correct.
Okay. So, just making sure that we are all on the same playing field, so that we all have the understanding of the potential financial consequences. I just wanted to check on that. Thank you. I also, I did want to make sure that we understood the cost of a survey, because I am having to do a survey at work on a parcel that's about six, about 20, about half an acre, and it's $10,000 for the survey, and it's flat as a pancake and paved. And it's boundary and topo, topographical, and then there's a $2,000 fee for the title report. So, I wanted people to understand that cost. I also have, I'm dealing with another two-acre parcel, and that survey is about $20,000, just so that, so that we have the cost situation. So, to be, let's see. We talked about the 50% residential in multifamily. Can I be clear about density bonus? How does a density bonus play into that at all? If they were to do extremely low or low income for that, for that portion of the multi, I'm forgetting my zoning, is it multi?
Mixed.
Mixed use, thank you. If it's mixed use, are they, at what point does a density bonus eligibility, you know, option happen?
Well, essentially, if, I'm not sure of the exact percentages, but I believe it's, I believe it's 20% low income, then that would, that would trigger their ability to have a, to have a density bonus. But, but I didn't, I didn't study that part of this meeting, so that's my recollection. But yes, there is, there is a, there is a certain point where if they, if the, within the mixed-use district, they could get more units if they, more units if they included low-income housing. By the way, the state is well aware of the fact that this actually raises the effect of density, and their meant, their thinking, from what I'm reading, is that there's going to be a lot of units that get lost with projects, projects that aren't developed, projects that, there's zoning changes. So, they kind of, they kind of view this, they kind of happily view that as a buffer on the other side. So, they're aware of that, and they, it's not something they're upset about.
Yep. Thank you. Can we talk about, can you remind me what the setbacks, going back to Dorothy Ford Field site? Can you remind me what the setbacks, I think, are along Alpine Road?
I believe that's a 30-foot scenic corridor.
Okay.
And, I'm sorry, thank you. 75-foot scenic corridor.
And is parking?
No, no, correct me if I'm. Sorry.
So, 75, 75, okay. And is parking allowed in the scenic corridor setback at all?
There are examples where parking has been put in the scenic corridor. The description is unclear. It says no structure. So, if you, now, in Portola Valley, we think tennis courts are structures. So, if you applied the same sort of feeling that we have, and certainly in discussion with the Stanford project, it was, the impression, at least I got from the town council, was that, that there shouldn't, if no structure, it means no parking.
Although, we do have parking like at Roberts and such, right along that scenic corridor.
Do.
And that, right, okay.
It still is a question of, with our present regulations, with our present, with the present vision of the community, whether or not, if somebody had a private project and they wanted to go into that setback, whether the town council would allow it is a question that we can't answer, but it's, I mean, that I can't answer. But it's possible that you wouldn't, given, given the input that we received during the Stanford project.
Thank you. What about, and can I be clear? If we were to upzone the Dorothy Ford site, it would include the baseball field, correct? Just for the record, I'm just, I'm well aware of the situation, but just for the record, if you can answer that.
Yes, it would.
Okay. And if we were to do what Councilmember Flynn and Vice Mayor Taylor is suggesting, right at the border of the field, for instance, right? How, you know, you and I both know construction sites are messy, and everyone here knows that construction sites are messy. So, how do you think that would impact the Little League field during construction? Would the Little League field potentially be closed during construction?
Well.
This is hypothetical, and I realize that.
I understand, but I want to say first with the hypothetical that it's my expectation that that project will never be constructed. But, but, all the same, if it were, if a future town council were to decide they wanted to do that, to do that, to do a 50-unit high-density project, then they would have to assess, as a part of their building permit, they would have to assess the impact on neighboring uses, and it would, and they would have to protect the trees and so on and so forth. But we would, I mean, the town conceivably say, use it for construction staging, but I can't really see that happening. There's, there's really, there's really nothing that would require that. So, I would think that the, that use could be protected.
Okay. We're feedback for a moment. Thank you. Next question. So, and I don't know if this, somehow, I haven't heard this discussed before, but, and so, has anyone talked about potentially on the spur, you know, in your staff report, you've said that it's, the site is very constrained. We all know that, the creek setback, the scenic corridor. But if we were to flip-flop the proposed housing site with the field, with parking in the field, and put the parking at Bialidera, put the baseball field where the proposed housing is right now, and move the housing further down? So that, you know, and then you can leave the oak trees around the baseball field and keep the oak trees too. And what, has that ever been considered or discussed at all? And how, how much of a problem would that be with what's before us unengendised? Because, like, obviously, changing usage can become.
Well, I guess, let me answer the last part first. I don't think it's, I don't think it has effect on what happens here tonight because we're really just talking about making the changes. It might, it might affect how you drafted the language that the vice mayor was talking about. It may, you may want to be careful how you drafted that to allow that possibility. However, that could also be changed in the future, so I'm not sure that that is a big concern for this. There are other problems with that, including the fact that that field was constructed with a state grant that I think would have to be paid back if it were, if it were demolished. So, if it were removed. And I don't think they would let you, you'd have to talk to the agency that granted that all those years ago. And it's probable, it's probable that that would be a significant complication. Also, I don't, I don't know that you could do the Little League field and the trees without, just my walking the site, I don't know if there's room for them.
Right. No, I kind of measured it and mapped it out, and I Googled, like, it's kind of like a Wrigley Field situation. So, you might need to do, like, gymnastic mats around it to protect the kids, kind of thing. But apparently, there are things like that that happen. So, just thrown out ideas.
I understand, but we have to take the roots as well with the trees of that site.
Yes. Okay. I think that's all my questions on this round. Thank you.
I think, I see.
Thank you. Just one last question I meant to ask earlier. Are you comfortable, I understand that the 2.4, by the time you do all the setbacks, doesn't seem like it's there, but are you comfortable that the buildable space that is there, not including the baseball field, is big enough to accommodate the 50 units, given that they would get some concessions and privileges because it would all be low-income housing?
Honestly, I'm not, I'm not, I, you know, the feasibility study, feasibility study is looking at sort of a typical affordable housing project or higher-density project with the numerous buildings and set aside. They did it on purpose to try to make it a financially feasible site. So, if, as you start changing it to four or five instead of, instead of three stories, and it, it changes the construction costs and so on and so forth. So, I'm not, I'm not confident that if you found a two-acre site, that that would necessarily be able to replace the site.
Okay, because we're saying 23 units per acre, so that'd be 46 on two acres. And then, I guess what the question I was asking is, given that there's some concessions, like, the buildings could potentially be closer together. I mean, there are some issues like that, right? I just, all I wanted to make sure is that we're not sort of playing the shell game of, oh, well, we've, you know, zoned the whole thing, but then you can't actually build the thing anywhere. I mean, that seems disingenuous. I mean, obviously, our goal is to find a different site to build altogether, but if we end up building there, I think it's our obligation to make sure that we can meet our obligation.
Yes, absolutely. It, it may require more financial assistance to make it feasible, but you could do it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, no problem. All right. Random questions in no particular order. If you could go back to the options, please. I don't, I think you're giving us these as alternatives, but as I read it, option two is compatible with other options, right? That you were saying this is the choice only if we don't take the other options.
Absolutely. Option two is something that you would do for either one or, one or three as well. Four is a little different because it requires additional study before we even get there. But, but, but it could even, it could even be part of four as well. Just gets a little awkward.
I just want to remind people that we're not, if there's a decision on one, three, or four, that that doesn't mean that two is not going to be pursued. Okay?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, so the feasibility analysis and the 2.4, how did HCD get comfortable if, upon retrospect, we don't find 2.4? Do you have any history to share?
Not much. I can just tell you that the feasibility study does show 2.4 acres as, but it does so by, I think accidentally, using the wrong riparian setback.
And who prepared the feasibility study?
Lisa Wise Consulting prepared it. With staff, with staff input? Not the staff, other staff.
So, what are the implications of us relying, making a decision relying on that feasibility study? Are there any downsides vis-à-vis HCD and our position with them? Are we going to be seen as, you know, not trustworthy or, like, I just want to understand the downside of relying on an inaccurate feasibility study?
It's, I'm having to conjecture a lot today, and that's, I got some more coming.
And I have sympathy for that.
So, but, is, if, if this is part of a proposal, if we discover, essentially, the story is, and it's a true story, we discovered some problems with the site, and we worked really hard and we found better sites. That's not going to be a problem with the state.
Okay, thank you. The 20% reference in the text that is proposed, that is literally taken out of the housing element, like, it's mirroring the housing element language. So, that's, like, that percentage is not something that we can open up because we're committed to it, we're just bringing it into the code. Okay, thank you. So, I got a little lost on the survey costs. I think I heard 10,000-ish without committing. Is that the ballpark that you envision? Well, I wanted to clarify, that's why.
Well, a topographical survey would not be required for that, although you would typically do it because it's going to be needed down the road. But I was guessing, so it's, it sounds like Councilmember Walter has a better guess than mine, so I would, I would defer to her recommendation of around 20,000.
Okay.
Was that yes, or is higher than?
No, I think it would be far higher, unfortunately. It's $20,000 for a two-acre parcel in Portola Valley for a boundary and topographic. And in Half Moon Bay, right now, I'm dealing with about a half an acre, and it's topographic and boundary for 12,000.
So, if we are going to pursue other options in parallel and we need a survey for any purpose, your normal process would be to do an RFP for the survey, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So, I want to review, I want you to review for me again. Sorry. Sorry to be, um, redundant, but the implications of not being compliant, not having the, the sites in process by 2031. If you could pause it, what that looks like.
Sure. The, the site would, would, the site would need to be, I'm talking about the Dorothy Ford housing site, would either need to be replaced or under construction by 2031, or else you would, you would again be out of compliance with the housing element. Although you would already be well underway with your next housing, I mean, this is probably scary to think about, but you would be well underway for your next housing element in, in process. So, so it's unlikely to be a, a big issue because it, it corresponds with the end of that last cycle. So you'll, you'll, you'll have already had a draft of the new cycle and you could probably address the issue by then.
I see. Thank you. The process for option three, you said that you may need to approach HCD because we're not doing, we would not be doing the formal rezoning at this point. A little more on how that looks. Would we be approving the zoning text amendments? And then what happens? What are the next steps?
You'd be approving the text amendments with, under that option, and then we would submit that to the state, telling them that, that in our opinion, that it meets their, their requirements. And we would be, the town manager and I would be offering, in fact, insisting on a meeting where we could explain, explain why. And we're, we'd be hopeful to be able to achieve that. But again, that, that is, even that process, even if successful, it, it's going to take time. It's going to take time to set up a meeting. It's probably going to require a state legislator to help us out, to get us to, get them to sit down with us. And so, so it's even, even the meeting process is going to take more time than simply comply.
Yeah, I would have thought.
Yep.
And what are the legal standards for HCD, you know, with the builder, builder remedy or the sanctions in particular? What are the legal standards? What would be the trigger for those?
When I hear legal standards, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking.
Well, it's a legal question, but I don't mind who knows the answer.
You know, we don't have a lot of data, I don't think, in terms of which cities have met HCD's ire to go after them.
I mean, the legal trigger, not the statistical, who's been hit yet.
Yeah.
No, though, there must be a statute in which they retain the rights to get sanctioned. So what, what is, what leads to that?
I'll, I'll have, I'd have to research exactly what that, what that says. Listen, here's if you know off the top of your head.
I can, well, I can't give it in detail, but the, the legislation provides the State Department of Housing Development a lot of leeway in determining whether or not a, an element is compliant or not. So unfortunately, there, there aren't really firm rules laid down. However, what's usually used is if they have a program that's, that's got a, that's got a deadline in your, in your housing element and you don't meet it, that's usually what they, that's usually what they, why, when they find, find an element out of compliance. And when an element is out of compliance, they don't have to do anything proactive to make builder's remedies possible. Once it's out of compliance, automatically, builder's remedy projects can be submitted.
I'm more focused on the other penalties than builder's remedy. I want to understand when we could, because that's a pretty severe sanction, 100,000 a month, et cetera. And I would think it's not going to be the base case, like, reaction, right? You're going to get there through some type of communication.
But I can say that it's, it's rarely applied. It's not, I can't say that it's not applied, but it's not, it's not applied. It's not applied typically.
Okay. All right. And then the last question that I've got is finding an equivalent parcel. So if we were to proceed and, and rezone Dorothy Ford, the, the site, however we do it, do we have any certainty on what is deemed an equivalent site? Like, if we're proceeding on the idea that we can switch out later, exactly what are the requirements to switch in? And if it's ambiguous, we should know that while we're talking this evening?
Well, it's not, it's not, it's not chiseled in, in stone, but, but the, the, the information in our housing element lists an acreage size and a, and a zoning and a density and a density amount. So it would have to be, it would have to be similar, if not, if not greater, size and density to be arguably a replacement. So, so just common, just, just in common sense, they, the things that we use to define the site would need to be met again with the new site or sites.
And if those facts or the premise on which we're designating Dorothy Ford are inaccurate, are we going to be held to that exact, if there's 2.2, if there's 2.0 in fact, but we've got to go get a 2.4 acre site elsewhere for 50 units or whatever? It doesn't sound to me like that, I mean, it sounds to me that's pretty risky, that there is a good question whether that's going to be found equivalent.
Well.
I'm uncon, I mean, how, everyone is talking as if we can rely on 2.4 and find it somehow. But I, I'm looking at a switch out later, whether it's through the post-adoption process or we get a different site in the near term. I'm trying to think, how would you frame that up?
Yeah, yeah. And we are, we're all conjecturing, trying to, to, to see the future. However, I, I'm not as concerned about that. I think that, I think we would need to meet the, the key pieces, the size and the density. If we were to go and say, we, we want to do, we want to do 30 small projects and the density is going to be 10 units per acre, I think that doesn't, that's not going to work with the, with the state. I think the state, since our housing element says 2.4 acres, 50 units, if we, if our replacement doesn't match that, I think we're going to have problems.
So if we find two acres at 50 units, isn't there still a fair amount of risk that that's not going to be equivalent?
Sure.
Okay.
I would be recommending that we, that we meet, that we meet exactly what they have, if not exceeding it.
And do we know out of the four parcels that the ad hoc committee identified, if any of those can meet the 2.4 slash 50 unit criteria?
Yes. Both of them, both large ones could. Fogarty property and, and the Village Square property could.
Okay, thank you. All right.
I mean, that's back of envelope, but yes.
Yeah, well, that's all we are able to do at this point, right? Sure.
Because Fogarty, because of the cost to develop those, that parcel for housing, because of the, would that, how would that play into the one-for-one if we were to replace, we were to upzone Dorothy Ford, Dorothy Ford's site and then swap it for Fogarty? Could that be a problem because of the, because how hard it is to build at that site?
Yes, it could. The state reviews every housing element site for the feasibility of the, of the site. And that, those, the questions of sewer water would, would be, would be, would certainly be forefront in their minds. That would be, that those issues would have to be resolved in order to make it, to make a compelling argument.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we're going to go to public comment. I'm going to call the, Dan McDonough, who submitted a card to speak in the schoolhouse.
Madam Mayor, can you formally open the public hearing?
Okay, we're opening the public hearing. And I'll ask Mr. McDonough to make his comment. And we, are you going to have the timer, please? Oh, we are limited to three, three minutes of speaker.
That'll be plenty. Good morning, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Dan McDonough and I'm the president of Alpine Little League, which serves hundreds of families in Portola Valley and the surrounding communities. I'm here tonight to urge you not to rezone all seven acres of Ford Field. There's been discussion about going beyond the 2.4 acres of open space and including the baseball diamond and its parking. That would be a serious mistake. Ford Field is more than just a ball field. It's the heart of our league, our flagship field, where we host our majors division, championship games and community events. It's a field teams travel all over the Bay Area to play on because of its beauty, history and community spirit. The demand for youth sports fields in the peninsula already far exceeds the supply. If anything, the growth of housing in Portola Valley means more need for public recreational space, not less. This isn't just about baseball. It's about preserving a rare, true public space where kids from all walks of life can play, learn teamwork and belong. These fields are one of the last remaining equalizers in our increasingly divided world. Back in 2022, this council received more than 250 pages of public comments defending Ford Field. That support has not, hasn't gone anywhere. The community still cares deeply about this space. If there's an opportunity, hence the field, Alpine Little League is eager to partner with the town. But if you move forward with any rezoning, it must guarantee space for youth sports and the parking required to make it accessible. We urge you to protect Ford Field and protect what makes Portola Valley a great place to grow up. And I, I'm just going to go off script briefly. You know, it seems to me that we're trying to find a short-term solution for what is a long-term problem. I think the, the better solution is to pursue sites that we actually want to build on. Because I think the city employees said they don't actually intend to build on the Ford Field site. So I struggle to understand why we would upzone that site when there's no intention to build on it at all, which is what I heard tonight. And so in my mind, I think we should be focusing on finding sites that we do actually intend to build on and meet the housing requirements. Thank you.
Thank you. And just for the record, we're not going to engage in a, a dialogue here. We're just taking all public comment. In the schoolhouse, Ellen Hoffman. Please put the mic on if you just push the button and.
Hi, Ellen Hoffman. My name's up there on Teacher Aid as one of the contributors to this project along with my husband, John Moore. We have been in the Village Square 38 years as the chiropractors in town. We live in town. We have other residents that actually work with us. And that's Jessica Reynolds, who lives in town. We have a few businesses within our business and we have some massage therapists too. But 38 years I've been in the Village Square and I just need to say that the owner of that, Stanley Lowe, if given permission, I think he would take the whole place down and rebuild the whole thing because it's probably going to be for him to create rentals. He'll get a lot more money from it. But I just need to know what's my future. I mean, this is like, almost devastating for us and I'm sure for the other owners of businesses that have been there for really decades. So I need that to know. The meeting with him tomorrow is his plan to just get rid of us. And this is so serious because I could not stay in my home in Portola Valley without my income. Okay, so this is, you know, all of you all understand that. Your income outside, but we have been in the Village Square 38 years. July 15th, 87 was when I started my business there. I practiced with my husband, John Moore, my son, Maxwell Moore, and my office manager's been with me since day one. And she has a home here too. Okay, so it's we're residents and provide a service. And if that has to be understood when you meet with him tomorrow, will he preserve, you know, will he be preserving our businesses? Because at this point in life, it's going to be really hard to relocate and start all over. And I just wanted to make that really clear. That's, you know, I understand your purpose is to as, get as much, squeeze as much housing you can out of that space. And I see it being torn down and the whole thing being rebuilt for all that. It is, and who knows where we're going. But I think we need to know because we got to prepare our future.
I understand. I'm gonna, I'm sure Terrence will pursue questions when he had that conversation.
Right, but I just, I just needed to be here so that you can see there's a face to these businesses. Okay, my son went through Orme Dale, Portola, Bialidera.
We're at the end of three minutes, but we do note your, your clear concern and we're going to take that into consideration. So thank you for coming this evening. Okay, Kristi Corley, Kristi C.
Okay, it's on now. Thank you for letting me sit down. I do have two broken fingers. I'm wondering how many people are online? I hope that you'll be able to tell us. Evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here today to express strong support for preserving Dorothy Ford Park exactly how it is. This is not just a piece of land. It's a deeply valued part of our community, a place where families gather, children play, and where the spirit of Portola Valley truly shines. Open space like this is part of our town's character and once it's changed, we can't get it back. At the heart of the park is the Little League field, which holds the special place in the hearts of so many for decades. Kids have played there, including my son, learning baseball, teamwork, confidence and a sense of community. It's a place where friendships are formed and where parents, grandparents, neighbors come to gather to cheer on the next generation. This field is a legacy and it deserves protection. There's been some uncertainty around the future of this parcel, but I think it's important to bring clarity. The town entered into a loan agreement and we want to understand if this loan is paid off and at what date it'd be paid off. It's my understanding it'd be paid off in 2031, which would open up the Little League field for building. Is that true, if you can clarify on that? This is the perfect moment to reaffirm the commitment to keeping Dorothy Ford Park a public space for recreation and community use, just as it was intended, intended. To that end, I asked the town to initiate a subdivision map act process to formally divide the lots on this parcel. This step would provide greater clarity about the land's current use and help ensure that the park and especially the Little League field remains protected in perpetuity. I also asked why this step wasn't completed earlier. It seems like a missed opportunity for transparency and long-term planning. This is not just about policy, it's about values. The people of Portola Valley deeply value open space, youth sports and preserving spaces that bring us together. So let's act now and make sure that this park remains exactly what it is. If you could please clarify. Oh, I was a little confused about what you said, a note. Is a note a legal terminology? Will it hold up in court? So when you add a note to, where you're adding a note, what happens later? Tell me the legal ramifications of that. That would be helpful. Because I don't understand.
We're running out of time, Kristi, if you could wrap up.
All right. Thank you. I think that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, next is Dee Hunter. It's not on yet. Fair point. Okay.
Hi, my name is Dee Hunter. I live at Five Church Court. I have three observations and the punchline of all three observations. If you need some additional community. And the punchline of all three observations, if you need some additional community support to attend any of these meetings, to give you a third-party perspective on negotiations with Stanley Lowe, with Christ Church, or anybody else, I'd be more than happy to volunteer. But above the line, for me, you have three issues. You have a timing issue, real estate issue, and a money issue. It's interesting that now you've suddenly woken up to the risk of builder's risk or builder's remedy, excuse me. That issue's been on the table for a long time. It's not my position to tell you to take that risk, but you're not seeing any applications and not hearing any noise in town, redeveloping Jell-O or whatnot, and somebody really trying to push a builder's remedy. Even in builder's remedy, they still have to clear CEPA, they still have to clear Public Works. So you're not totally defenseless. I'm not saying to take the risk, but you've been happy with it so far. Secondly, the issue with dealing with HCD, I do think that they will work with you. I think that they'll be open-minded. Frankly, I don't think they would be that sticky on two acres versus 2.44 acres. I think you could put a nobilitysmen over a portion of the baseball field lot. Whereas I'm sure I've sold it growing up and want to protect that forever also, even though my career was dubious. I do think the state would work with you. So I do think you have a little more latitude in that. I think once you show them that you're going to go ahead and entitle that piece of property in the broader sense of the word, it will be a little stickier than before you've actually landed on your site. But I do think, net-net, at the end of the day, I do think the state will work with you, whether it's two acres, 2.4. They want the housing units, they want these communities to meet that obligation. Pretty hard to find any city that actually has been subjected to this fine. Huntington Beach, I don't know how that ended up. I think there was that one lawsuit. But really, you haven't seen smaller, more rural communities like ours be subjected to it. So I think the fact that you're working hard to find that solution will give you a little more latitude, should help you sleep at night. And lastly, the real estate issues are brought, whether people have leases or don't have leases. Clearly, private development is going to be subjected to other development principles that will go through the process. But I do think you have options. I think communicating clearly to the state what your preferences are will help you with that. And then lastly, there are costs. You're too far away to know what all this is going to cost the community. But I do think you've opened your eyes, you're going in the right way. And I think part of the, in a football term, the wishbone offense, keeping your eye on Dorothy Field, but really looking at your other options and informing the state would probably be the clearest way to go, in my opinion.
Thank you. Nona.
By the way, I do think it's about 20 grand for that.
Okay, sure. Great.
My name is Nona Chariallo, and I'm here speaking as an individual, but I, I serve on three committees. First of all, I really appreciate the depth and the detail of your questioning so far, the seriousness with which you're taking this is really inspiring. I want to address a detail in one of the maps that may have been confusing. I'd like to just clarify something. And so if you could show the map. The map is one that I made for a very specific purpose that's not being addressed tonight. And that purpose was to emphasize how important conservation was to the establishment of Dorothy Ford Park, so much so that there was a conservation easement placed on the property on the opposite side of the creek, from the center line of the creek going east 25 feet. The yellow line in that map is the eastern boundary of that parcel on the other side of the creek. It is not a Dorothy Ford Park boundary. I wasn't sure if there was any confusion about that, and so I really just wanted to clarify it. The, that particular map has the parcel boundary for Dorothy Ford Park in green, and it purposely didn't show up very clearly so that the other boundary could be emphasized. Again, just a clarification. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there another speaker forum that's coming in? Betsy. Betsy, do you want to speak now?
Yes, thank you. Betsy Morgan Taylor speaking as a resident. I too want to compliment you for careful weighing of the many nuances. It is a very challenging number of risks that you need to weigh here. And my reason for speaking is to bring your attention, as I did in my letter yesterday, to another point. I really want to leave you with your open question about this small but important aspect of the proposed zoning ordinance before you, one that opens the door for Dorothy Ford Park potentially to be developed with as few as 20% lower-income units. Whereas clause number seven calls for a zoning amendment, so to Title 18 of the municipal code, and I will just read that small little snippet that says allow, allow on Dorothy Ford by right for developments in which 20% or more of the units are affordable to low-income households. So as you think about Dorothy Ford and its incredible attractiveness to developers at a potential 80% market rate and 20% lower income split, and imagine the proposed change to our municipal code. My question is, having traded one set of circumstances for another, are we going to be better off? Were I to try to answer that question, I would want to have a good handle of the legal grounds that would exist for the town to turn down a potential developer who presented a proposal that conformed to the letter with the municipal code as it was then written and proposed a 40-market-rate units and 10 lower-income units. Would HCD agree with the legal assessment? I just want to make sure that were you to face a more challenging dilemma than you faced today, that you walk into it with your eyes fully open. Because felling the Ford Witness trees for 10 lower-income units and simultaneously losing HCD certification because we're then 40 units shy of our 15-unit total would be extremely heavy for all of us. If our aspiration is to build 50 very low-income units on Ford is as sincere as I do believe it to be, then I'm in favor of aligning that with what we say in the ordinance that's before you, and we could do so just by dropping out that 20%. So I think that that is something for you to consider. Thank you for doing so with such grace.
Oh, thank you. All right. I see no other hands in the schoolhouse. Online, we have a handful of commentators. Dale Fow is the first.
Great, I believe you can hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Quick comment, please, could folks there in the schoolhouse speak up? Sometimes it's difficult for us to hear you out here in the ether. I've got three quick comments. Number one, the builder's remedy and the other, you know, boogeyman-type things that people have been bringing up for three years, I continue to believe are just that, a complete red herring. If there was going to be a builder's remedy, we would have seen it in town already. We all know the price of land, the price of construction. Nothing really pencils out in any of the parcels that we have in town. And as far as I can tell, and I've, I've asked Grok about this, there have been no lawsuits in the state of California where the penalties that the councilman Walter brought up have actually been imposed. There's some lawsuits flying back and forth, but nothing has been imposed so far. So I think that's a complete red herring. Number two, I want to talk about unintended consequences. Really, Dorothy Ford Park was donated to the town in the assumption that it would be open space and parkland in perpetuity. The mistake was that it was never codified. It was never placed in that. So therefore, a town council in its infinite wisdom decided that, gee, let's hand this beautiful piece of property to HCD to meet our requirements for low-cost housing. That was an unintended consequence. So now you have before you a proposal to upzone the entire parcel, the entire seven acres. What are the unintended consequences here? If you do that, there is no guarantee that some future town council might not decide to give that entire parcel to HCD in return for something else. I am very much against upzoning that parcel, incredibly against that. And the third thing, comment I want to make, is that it's been glossed over in here, but you do have the results of the planning commission in front of you. These are five wise members of our community who live in Portola Valley, have been here for decades in some cases, and have thought through these issues very, very carefully. And they have given you their recommendations. And staff has chosen to ignore those recommendations and offer something else. Please pay attention to what your, your other community members are saying. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dale. The next is Randy Gabrielson.
Thank you. I'll say the same thing I said just a week ago. My grandfather was teammates with Lou Gehrig. My father was teammates with Henry Aaron, Henry Aaron and Willie Mays. I was teammates with Randy Johnson and Mark McGuire. And my son is teammates with Aaron Judge. We're a baseball family. We've lived here for 22 years. I coached for nine years in Alpine Little League, and we've also been, you know, part of the community for a long, long time. Tonight, my son played a game in double A, triple A, or double A today against Griff McGarry, who played in Alpine Little League. And he played. Kind of cool, two kids from Portola Valley playing against each other in the big, in the big leagues. So this is Eric Burns. This is Matt Gall. This is, it's a very special place. So I really hope that, you know, Terrence, I don't know you. You may be a great guy, we might be best friends, but the fact is, I think you're a hired gun trying to get something approved. Don't upzone something because it's, you know, the easy deal. Don't pick that. And if you do, we're going to run into, you're going to, at the end of the day, you're going to have a problem because it's just not the right thing to do. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next speaker will be phone number 7562.
Good evening, Caroline Bertongan. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm very upset. You know, we can prepare our speech, and then we hear all the comments of the residents. Some of them are very successful businessmen. And I, I refer to Mr. Dee Hunter, who runs the Alpine Inn. I really was hoping that you find the balance. And I really, your residents do not want to upzone that area. Dorothy Ford Field is not up for affordable housing. Nona spent all her time showing you how the maps that were submitted were so wrong. It is time that you understand our general plan and that you tell your staff and consultants, we have a very strong community and we will do everything. But unfortunately, we don't know everything because it's all, it's not revealed. It's always the next, we will, we will find out the next meeting, and the next meeting, and the next meeting. That's now how we are used to have our town governed. And I'm urging you to change your policy to manage this, this town. We are a very special community, and I'm not sure that this town council understands this. I'm still waiting to understand that you are upholding our general plan, that you are upholding our vision to keep this a rural community. And I hope that tonight you will listen to all the residents who have spoken up and make sure that the staff is responding to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy, just in case you don't know it, your hand is still up, but you've already spoken, so if you could work on taking that down. Patty D is next.
Hi, Patty D is Chair of the Portola Valley Parks and Rec Committee. I submitted a letter online, public comments. It did not show up in public comments, so I'm going to read the letter and request that it be attached to the minutes for the meeting going booked. I do apologize for my voice. I was actually at the Giants game this afternoon cheering on a very, very thrilling, comfortable high victory. A baseball, members of the Portola Valley Town Council, on behalf of the Portola Valley Parks and Rec Committee, we are writing to express our strong support for the preservation of our local Little League Field and the adjoining parking lot located at Dorothy Ford Park. We understand that you are currently discussing actions that may have zoning of the Dorothy Ford Park and open space parcel and potentially, even if advertly so, open this space to development. We urge the council to protect this valuable asset for current and future generations. Our Little League Field has served us more than just a place for children to play baseball. For almost 50 years, it has been a gathering place where families build lasting memories and community bonds, a safe space for our youth to engage in healthy physical activity, a venue that teaches children teamwork, perseverance, and sportsmanship, a local landmark that represents our town's values and commitment to future generations. The loss of this field would not only eliminate recreational opportunities for our children, but green spaces like our Little League Field provide environmental benefits, increase property values, and contribute significantly to the quality of our residential community. We respectfully request that the town council reject any proposal that would rezone the Little League Field and parking lot. Additionally, we would like the town council to look for those alternative locations for affordable housing that don't require sacrificing established community spaces, such as those identified by the ad hoc site evaluation committee. Formally designate the Little League Field and parking lot as protected recreational space. We believe and we understand the pressures that you face regarding development and economic growth. However, preserving spaces like our Little League Field represent an investment in our town's future that will yield dividends far beyond any short-term financial gain from development. Thank you for your consideration. Thank you for your consideration for your service to this community. Sign. The members of the Portola Valley Parks and Recreation Committee. Thank you. Go Giants.
Thank you, Patty. All right. Next is Karen Askey.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, well, I'm glad that Patty went first. I am a member of the Parks and Rec Committee and my name is on that letter. Um, and I also wrote an individual letter that I, I hope you all read, so I don't want to rehash that. But I am very concerned about protecting Ford Field and parking. And I think Dale using the word unintended consequences is a good one. Um, I'm worried about it if, if we rezone the entire thing. And, uh, you know, one of the things, Terrence mentioned, um, compatible acreage if we were to find a replacement site. And I am concerned that if we rezone that seven-plus acres, HCD may make us find seven-plus acres and not because we've already rezoned it for the, you know, 20 to 23 and not just the 2.48. So I'm just going to throw that out there and hope that we get a definitive answer that that would not happen. Um, I'm also concerned that if we issue an RFP for Ford by January of '26 and we don't actually know what the parcel is, I, I really don't understand how we can do that, the practicality of that. So I'm going to throw that out there. Um, in terms of the question on the setbacks of 75 feet, um, I just want to remind people that Alpine is a main evacuation route and there's been talk of creating a third lane so we can get out. So thinking about, um, encroaching on that setback concerns me. Um, I also have a question on how long it will take HCD to get back to us if we submit all this rezoning and how long it will take for them to certify us, um, because they don't seem to be getting back to anyone very quickly. Um, and the last comment is just to let you know, since I was on the ad hoc, um, site evaluation committee, Village Square is 2.27 acres. And in our initial meeting with Stanley Lowe, he does not want to touch the commercial buildings. He talked about building on the side and in the back of the parking lot. Um, and my thought process is if we have to find an equivalent 2.4 acres, we can also rezone the portion of the Christ Church site, um, that would get us up to that amount, uh, maybe more. So those are my thoughts. I realize that you guys, um, have a very difficult decision in front of you. I'm sorry that you have to deal with this. And I do want to reiterate that sometimes the best decision is not the easiest decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Rita Comets.
Thank you for taking my comment. Uh, I sent it, I sent in a letter and, uh, I hopefully, you know, the residents had a chance to, to read that letter, but it's, I really hope that we have a second reading of this particular proposal. Uh, the Portola Valley school system is off this week. You know, the kids that would be in the Little League are traveling and those parents that have, uh, come to our town, our town has, half of it has been, uh, completely overturned in the past 11 years. And a lot of those are families with children and, uh, you know, young children and teenagers. And they're gone this week. You know, so I really hope we don't waive the second reading and I hope that we have an opportunity similar to, um, what the planning commission did for the Woodside Priory and get all those letters and comments and stuff from past meetings together so that the residents can see everything in one place at one time to make the best decision and have the best discussions. And that has not happened with this particular project and it hasn't happened for years. So it's really unfortunate that, you know, we may do something and make decisions that will affect our town forever and can't be undone without any kind of cost analysis of if these spots are even viable, you know, to, to see. Let's do a cost analysis and have that kind of conversation. But, um, thank you for your time and, and really appreciate all that everyone is trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll give it another few seconds. I don't see any other hands in the public at this point. Uh, uh, one more. Greg.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Can you hear us? We can hear you.
You can hear me, okay?
Yes.
So Greg Franklin, um, Applewood. Um, just had a couple of other issues to, to your consideration, um, regarding the, the, the threat of builders remedy in Portola Valley. A couple of the prior speakers have already alluded to this, but I think you should, uh, run some numbers and, uh, consider the financial feasibility of any construction in Portola Valley. So I'll give you some data points here. So about, during the fall, I think September, October, um, I asked the architect, uh, of, uh, Goncalves and Strong, who are the contractors for the Willow Commons project, uh, what number one should budget for construction in Portola Valley? And the answer I got was 400, $1,400 a square foot. And that number was confirmed by Carter Ware, who, uh, I think is the architect of that project. So if you were to consider the implications of construction, even for a builder's remedy situation, let's say you were going to build a 500-square-foot unit at $1,400 a square foot, that's $700,000. And if you were to build a slightly larger one at 700 square feet, that'd be almost a million dollars of construction cost. So let's say you discounted that 25% from a construction quality standpoint, you're still at over $500,000 and over $750,000 a unit. And this is construction that's supposed to, uh, accommodate, uh, people in the low and very low income category, household incomes of less than $130,000. Uh, by the way, that $1,400 a square foot, that was before any conversations or discussions about tariffs on lumber, steel and aluminum. So I think if you run your numbers, uh, if we run our numbers, it's hard enough to develop anything in Portola Valley, let alone, uh, low-income housing because as previous speakers have spoken, uh, it's very hard to make the numbers work out. And then of course, um, 30-year mortgage interest rates hit 7% today. So I don't know what construction loans are, but interest rates are high and they're supposed to be high for longer, um, based on, uh, reports I've read. The second item I, uh, recommend for your consideration is, has anybody in the town council of, uh, stature, say a mayor or vice mayor, reached out and had a conversation with our state elected representatives, uh, to, to, to help, uh, us navigate this situation and including some of the alternatives you're going to consider tonight? Obviously, there are two candidates who have...
Greg, you gotta wind down. Can you wrap up now?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would suggest somebody reach out and speak to Senator Becker because, because he's, you know, working on legislation related to...
All right. Greg, uh, we take your, we note the recommendation. Um, so we, we have to move on here. 30 seconds over, so, um, trying to be fair here. Thank you. Um, I do not see any other hands online. So given that, I'm going to call the, the public comment, uh, to close. I think we should take a short break before we have our discussion. So let's come back about 9:25. We ended the public hearing and now we're going to come back for discussion among the council. Um, Mary, just in light of the fact you're three hours ahead, I'm going to let you go first, if you care to, on, on discussing your thoughts.
Thank you. Uh, well, everybody, I think the public was wonderfully helpful, uh, and, and right on, on so many things. And, and of course, I, I share those sentiments. Uh, I feel the need to thank the planning commission for its several generations of hard work on, uh, on trying to bring sense to this. And I think that we have, uh, I really do. As far as I'm concerned, we're already, uh, living the unexpected consequences of having...
Hey, Mary, I do want to interrupt just briefly because I think we're gonna, again, we're bifurcating this, which is a little unusual because I need to step away. So if it's okay with the council members, let's address the mixed-use zoning first, which is what I need to recuse.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And Mary, we'll let you go first, but I, I'm, just wait a second till I'm out and then I can lead through the discussion of the mixed use, okay?
Oh, okay. So you are stepping out?
Just two minutes or a minute.
So on mixed use.
On mixed use, I have much less to say. Um, I would say that, uh, I don't think it's, is gonna, is that really gonna make any difference if we do the mixed use at this stage? Is that something we, uh, that has some utility? I guess I have more questions about that than, uh, I didn't really, I, I don't really feel prepared as yet to do the, um, the statement. Uh, and I'm not sure, why are we, why, I, I keep trying to understand why we spend so much time on such a tiny little advance. I mean, it's, we're not moving the dial for housing. Um, is this something that they're just forcing us to do and why, why do we do this now? I guess that's my, my, I know nothing about it really, as far as the mixed use is concerned. Um, I, I don't even know whether we've talked about it with the owners. Do they, uh, do we know, do we know what their, uh, their, their situation is? Is this going to affect them negatively or positively?
So my understanding is this is already in the housing element. We're just moving it into the zoning. So it actually isn't changing anything other than we're formalizing it. And that was the request from HCD that we formalize what's in the housing element in the zoning code. So we're not changing anything. We're not adding any new requirements to the housing element, um, assuming that it's accepted, already has all this in it. It's just a matter of, we need to put it in the zoning as well as in the housing element.
Okay.
So we kind, we kind of already had the discussion when we were, you know, originally working through the housing element from this particular set of, um, mixed use. I know it was a long time ago, so it's hard to remember some of this stuff, but, um, it's not new. Yeah.
And, and it isn't going to take the owner by surprise.
Presumably, they've been following the housing element and it will not take the owner by surprise.
Okay.
Okay. Helen, you want to go next?
Um, I absolutely support it. Um, you know, for cities, it's, uh, we save money on commercial and that's been a problem and why we're behind on housing. You know, you don't have to have as much fire, protect, you know, fire protection, trash, sewer, et cetera, for, uh, for commercial. Um, so this is a way to, to increase the mixed use so we have our amenities and we have residential. So I absolutely support it and happy to answer any other questions you guys might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. Rebecca?
Um, if it is indeed in our, um, housing element, the minimum, um, I, I don't see it being an issue to add it to our code. It seems to work with what's required in the legislation from the state, so I think I'm fine with, um, updating the mixed use with that addition of a minimum.
Okay. Thank you. Um, and I feel the same. And I really just feel like we're moving housing element language into the zoning. Mary, do I see you wanting to say more?
Well, yes, I guess I want to understand, Helen, how it increases our commercial. It seems like it just puts a further, uh, handicap on our commercial.
I'm sorry. I didn't understand your question, how it, I think...
Uh, your implication was that, uh, that it would, it would improve the opportunity for commercial, uh, for commercial real estate.
No. So for developers, it's, um, it's more, you know, let's be straightforward, like it's more lucrative to do commercial. Um, and it costs cities less because you don't have to have, you know, as much fire protection, for instance, at night or things like that, right? Um, so oftentimes towns are disincentivized from having mixed use with a lot more residential, um, you know, with 50%. And so they prefer, you know, it's better for developers to build commercial.
Yeah.
Um, so, um, but we need housing, right? And we don't have much commercial and we're not going, you know, we're not going to get a big Home Depot or, or Target here anyway, right? We like, you know, this community is a nice, quiet residential community. I'd love more restaurants, for instance, or more ice cream shops or coffee shops, you know, like, it'd be great to have some amenities out here. Um, I wish we had a post office, remember? And some of you might remember, we used to have a post office and a pharmacy out here a long time ago. So, um, so I hope that makes sense. I absolutely, we want more housing out here. I, you know, that means probably what we would get is, you know, two stories instead of one story, potentially three stories with step backs, for instance, but I absolutely support that. So I hope that makes sense.
Yeah. It, it seems like, uh, yeah, okay. I, I understand.
All right. So I would entertain a motion to, what would be the formal title of this?
Terrence, do you have that handy or...
Hold on. Oh. I mean, it's just the 18...
It said, uh, thank you. A zoning amendment of eight, to 18 dot 23 dot 70, adding the text that is indicated in the, in the, in the staff report and in the ordinance.
Motion to introduce an ordinance as described by Terrence.
Second.
Wait, wait, wait.
Hold on. We, someone has to make the motion.
I was just describing what it is.
She was just stating the motion. So somebody else has to move it. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have it?
Oh, I can't tell.
So wait, I got, I got too many conversations. So can somebody move?
Okay. So I'll, um, I'll make the motion to amend the zoning code, chapter 18.23, mixed use district regulations, 18.23.070, to require a minimum of 50% of the square footage and a mixed use development to be residential.
Second.
Okay. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Flynn?
Aye.
Councilmember Hossi?
Aye.
Councilmember Wolfram?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Pass, though, is abstaining. Or recused. Motion carried.
Thank you. All right. I'm gonna text Judith and let her know we're done. I return the gavel to you.
So Catherine, every, procedurally, we're moving on.
Procedurally, we're moving on and it's fine to tell you what happened, which was that the, um, the council did approve of...
which was that the, um, the council did, uh, approve a motion to, um, amend the mixed use.
Okay. Okay. Um, and I'm gonna ask that Mary to go first again, given the difference in time. Uh, in this case, we're, we're talking about the rezoning of the Dorothy Ford Park and open space.
Well, I can just start by saying that I am not for rezoning the Dorothy Ford, uh, housing, the Dorothy Ford Open Space. I think we have to respect the work that the Planning Commission and the Open Space Committee, and the Ad-Hoc Committee have done to, uh, to bring us to this point of information. And we have to have the courage to, of our convictions, to go ahead and do everything we can to defend Dorothy Ford. Uh, it's, um, you're aware that it's gonna be a costly situation. It could also be dangerous for a number of reasons, but it's the right thing to do. And as far as unexpected consequences are concerned, I think we're currently suffering from, already from the unexpected, the unanticipated consequences of not having been honest about the Dorothy Ford housing opportunity, uh, from the beginning. We, uh, never really had an adequate site there. We certainly never had this full support of the community, or even any semblance thereof. But in terms of just the geography and the, uh, the risks, and I just wanted to say, uh, I moved to California because I believe in, right, in taking care of riparian, our riparian zones and our trees. And I moved to Portola Valley because I love the gateway. Not the gateway that, uh, that planning, uh, departments put forward, but the gateway where you come into Portola Valley, and you take a deep breath, and you realize that you're in the country that you're in an area that people really respect the animals and the trees, and, and their, their unity with nature. And I would do, I would, would put a lot on the line to, uh, support that vision of the gateway, as opposed to the housing element vision of a gateway. So that seems a relatively, uh, option two seems really the obvious one. But the, the work has been done, um, to show us already, that's the Planning Commission, number four, actually looked at the work that the Open Space Committee did and, uh, the Ad-Hoc Committee did pretty carefully, and they basically felt that we'd already done the feasibility study on Dorothy Ford Park. And that we don't need, so I don't see a whole lot of difference between option two and option four. The only thing I have, uh, that I hesitate about is, uh, the quote costs of doing option two. It seems we have costs on every side. And what we're trying to do is make opportunities, uh, that we can afford, but we not 100% sure what our income is and where we, where we're gonna get the money to do this, and we do have some pockets of money to make things happen, uh, within the, uh, what the Ad-Hoc Housing Committee has put forward. So, uh, I think foot, full speed ahead with option two. And, uh, and I, I would, I would be very uncomfortable with rezoning the Dorothy Ford Park at this point, just because it's just further putting further, uh, sort of a duplicitic, um, approach to, to, you know, the state we all came to live in, that we wanted to have, uh, fair housing and good environment, you know? So why would we, why would we do anything but be straightforward with them about the fact that this is not an adequate site?
Okay, so that's option two at the end of the day for Mary.
That's right.
Okay. Um, Helen, would you like to go next?
Can I, I have a I have a question about setbacks first. Um, could I be, get clear, obviously, we have a 75-foot setback scenic corridor situation. Traditionally, like, what is used for setbacks? Because I know, like, understate law with ADUs, it got changed from, like, you know, lots of setbacks to five feet, right? So I'm just curious, generally for scenic corridors, what's a traditional setback?
Sorry, I'm gonna have to say, it depends on the circumstance and the different communities. It really is, is quite, it's quite different.
Quite a range, and can you give me a range, potentially?
As little as 25 feet and as much as 100.
Okay, just curious, thank you.
I could, I could comment on that, uh, just because I've, I've read through so many times how the Alpine scenic corridor is described, and it's described by a lot of things, like, uh, line of sight, uh, believe it or not, you know, it's, it's the scenic corridor is, as you come to Portola Valley, is supposed to be rural. It's supposed to be scenic. And, and so housing is supposed to be protected from view from the road.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Um, so a couple of comments, first of all, I, you know, I, my kid's on spring break this week. I, we should not have had this on spring break, we were supposed to have it two weeks ago. But I agree with these, many of the comments about spring break because of the Little League impact. Um, so that's just a comment, you know, we need to make sure that the community is available and aware, and so we need to think about school breaks, and I didn't think about it, so apologies. I also wanted to, uh, talk about that I voted against this site when I was on the second housing element, ad hoc housing element committee. Or on the third ad hoc housing element, uh, housing element site committee now. So I didn't, I still don't think that, you know, if it meets the criteria for furthering fair housing in the, in town. I'm very concerned about the riparian setback and the, um, and the oaks that are there. Um, I would love to be able to see if we worked with the state, uh, agency to move, you know, to flip-flop, it sounds like we don't have the money to do that. And, which leads me, I, I'm extremely, extremely concerned about the potential, financial penalties that we are facing. Because if, if a lawsuit comes in, it could bankrupt the town completely. With the 100,000 per month situation up to 600,000. That said, um, I appreciate that we have other site possibilities. Of course, my dad's going through, right, no, sorry. And, um, so, um, so I actually am leaning towards option three. I, you know, I approve the two zoning ordinance amendments. But I, I'd like to not rezone the entire site. Um, I want to protect our youth sports situations, we already are having problems with parking at Alpine Inn. And our youth soccer field, so to then also, you know, potentially upend our, um, our baseball kids. And even, like, it, like, I struggle because of the baseball diamond that you're telling me that we can't move the site, but yet we could build housing on it. Um, because of the original grant for the field, potentially, so, um, so I find that, um, strange. So I am leaning towards three at the moment, but I'm not thrilled with it, be, and I'm curious to hear what my other council members think. So that's where I'm at, thank you.
Okay. Craig, do you have comments at this point?
Well, I, I think as we all see, I mean, we have a bit of diffus, difficult set of choices here. There's the potential sacrifices of open space and the ball field. But we also risk builder's remedy, and we risk lawsuits. So, I guess when I look at this, I, I worry about builder's remedy, I think the cost to the community could be quite high. I'm, I understand people say, well, it hasn't happened, and I think I would say about builder's remedy is, it takes two things, it takes a willing builder and it takes land. So all you have to do is have a piece of land open up and a willing builder, and you can get builder's remedy. And so just because we haven't gotten it to date doesn't mean we wouldn't get it tomorrow or as soon as an appropriate piece of property showed up. So I'm a little more worried about builder's remedy than maybe some other people are. Um, the other thing is lawsuits. The more we hang out, the more we're subject to lawsuits by various, you know, NIMBY, and I, I'm not sure, let's see, I guess it's YMB, it's, it's the YMB block, thank you. Um, and, and I take that seriously, and those are expensive. Um, I mean, just to respond to those lawsuits are, are expensive. I'm also sympathetic to unintended consequences, unfortunately, I think there's unintended consequences sort of in all the different avenues that we look at. So I, I'm not happy with this, but I come down to, um, rezoning all of Ford Field, but putting in language to protect the baseball field explicitly, um, as we talked in the questions, and that we pursue the alternate options. Like, I think that, from my point of view, that gives us to the earlier con, you know, sort of the wishbone offense, that we close out the risk to builder's remedy. We also, I think, close out extra staff time dealing with HCD, because this is gonna be a way, I mean, if HCD comes back after this and says, oh, and now we want some other stuff, then I'm definitely going to my legislature, um, to, to work on this, because this is, this is getting ridiculous. But I think it's important that we move past this, so that we can focus on the alternate sites, because that's, I think, what we all want. So I would be in favor of one, as difficult as that decision is for me. Thank you.
Okay, Rebecca?
Um, I just wanna start with a quick question about option three. It says approve the two zoning ordinance amendments, can, can you just clarify exactly what the language would be for that? I mean, does that mean that note two would be included, and then we just wouldn't modify the zoning map? Or is there something else that you're recommending for option three? I'm not clear now.
Sure, that, through the mirror. You described it properly, the, this would be to change, to do the text amendments, to add the both, I'm sorry. The council's already acted on one of the, one of the text amendments, to approve the other, but not to rezone the parcel. That's what, that's what option three.
But zone, but note two sets specifically says the same thing as zoning, that's why I'm a little unclear. You're saying because it wouldn't be stuck in the map, that therefore it's not really zoned?
Correct, the, the map actually zones the parcel. The, the, the text simply describes, um, sort of in detail what happens on, if, if the properties are zoned by, with that, with that designation.
Okay, so, all right, okay, so, um, my comments, of course, this is an extremely difficult decision, and it is predicated on how much we as a commission, uh, as a council member feel that the risk for builder's remedy or for lawsuits, you know, how high we believe that is, how high we believe a billionaire in town might decide, or a new one, might decide to build a palatial estate. It's hard to evaluate what that risk is. Um, it's not zero, it's not 100%, but there's significant risk. Um, in general, I've never been in support of any housing at Ford Park. I'm not a fan of putting housing on open space, and I'm not a, and I don't feel that that particular, the particular project is designed as 100% affordable, is actually, um, in line with Fair, the Fair Housing Act. I mean, it's not replacing, it's creating a segregated living situation, which the Fair Housing ordinance actually says that we should not be doing, so personally, just a sort of side thing, I would rather see mixed income projects, but of course, that makes it hard to build 50 VLI units. Option one, um, if we did move forward with that, I absolutely completely agree with Vice Mayor Taylor. We absolutely have to put in there that the ball field and the parking lot is protected, and it does not include that area at all, if we were to move forward with that. Um, we need to spell it out very clearly. It, it's hard, I mean, option two, I'm 100% on that one, we need to move forward with that regardless of what the other decisions are. Um, option three, I, I feel that it may be a better, um, solution to help us move forward. Um, it does require, um, town staff to go to Sacramento and meet face-to-face with HCD, which I don't know would be a negative thing. Um, I, I think, when I read the letter from HCD, there were so many errors in there, that it's clear that there, that there are problems there. I don't think they even realized that they, everything they said in that letter was not correct, you know? It just, it's stunning to me that the, the director of whatever department was that wrote that wrote incorrect things, that not in line with the actual law. So I don't think it's a negative that we go and talk to them and explain that we have been putting in thousands of hours. We've spent over 1.2 million already on trying to meet the things. We submitted a housing element, it got approved as it was written. And then, you know, okay, we were behind with our zoning, yes, I, you know, I understand that happened. But, but to have them reopen our housing element and find two new problems, it, it just, it seems so unfair. Um, and I, I wonder, you know, as Mr. Hunter said, is, would a conversation face-to-face with HCD with perhaps support from our legislators, you know, turn the tide? You know, assuming we move forward with three, we got the two ordinance amendments done, would that be enough? I, I wonder, you know, I, I'd like to hope it would, I'd like to hope that, um, people could be reasonable with that. Um, but it is a difficult decision. I am very concerned about the fact that the quality of the consulting work that was done for Ford Open Space or Ford Park was very poorly done. That we don't have 2.48 acres, that number frankly was invented, because if you multiply 2.48 by 20, magically, you get 50, you know? So there was no effort made to actually create 2.48. And that's my belief about that. Um, it would appear, based on, uh, Nona Tierelo's excellent work, that we only have 2.2 acres, and of that 2.2 developable land, only 1.1 is actually buildable. So, you know, we don't have what we put in our housing element originally. So it makes me a little nervous to move forward and say that we do. Let's see. And then I'm also concerned about upzoning even the 2.4 acre portion of, um, the parcel to high density, and then asking to be able to reverse that back to open space, even if, um, our planning director says that, that as long as we do a, a, a like switcheroo, that HCD will magically, or whatever, will be all of a sudden reasonable and allow us to do that, so, and, and I'm a little confused about why it would be based on acreage and density and not based on actual housing units, because that's really what we're trying to build, is housing units. So it's, it's a difficult decision. And I don't know that I have a perfect one, except, except that option two for sure. Oh, I should also say, I don't, I don't approve of option four, I, I respect very much the Planning Commission and the time they put into, uh, into this, but given the reality is that nobody in town wants to build on Ford Park, I don't see us, I don't see it even remotely reasonable to spend 20-plus grand on doing any kind of surveying of that property whatsoever. Um, it's not gonna help us move forward with anything. Uh, and I think if we do move forward with option one, I think just describing it it with specifically saying does not include, you know, the, the ball field or the parking lot, and only includes the area north of that, um, should be more than adequate, um, to protect the ball field. So I, I don't know that I have a 100% decision yet.
We, we, we can circle back after we hear each other, that's fine, I think Helen had one more comment. Okay. All right, um, yes, it, this is really hard. I wanna remind people where we're starting from. The town does support affordable housing in town. The town does support affordable housing in town. The choices we're being forced to make are really challenging for a whole host of reasons that we've discussed a lot already. I wish we were in a position to back up and rethink with a blank paper. I wouldn't wish that on the community, to be honest, and we're not in that position. One of the issues I have, I have a lot of issues with option one, but one of them, even if you added the language about not touching the ball field, frankly, you might be limiting your flexibility. There might be minor adjustments that could be done to adjust that ball field in a way that still works as a ball field, because I agree with the goal of keeping that as a vibrant community resource. So I personally think drawing a line and saying here north, we could always redo, you know, make a different decision later about what that means, but I think it might be artificially And so I just note that. I am uncomfortable with the fiction of proceeding with 2.48, but where I get torn is, 2.48 is in the housing element more generally, it's been there, we're kind of living with it right now. And so that's why I do understand the planning commission's recommendation to go back and, you know, this was a good faith mistake, is how I'm looking at this, that we did a ton of analysis and the numbers aren't there right now. It's not worth going back and looking at why, they're just not there. So, you know, we are in a situation where we're trying to comply, and we don't have an easy comfort level. I think each one of us has a different level of comfort with using 2.48. The practical implications of rezoning the whole parcel as well, I still see too many unknowns about what the equivalency will be deemed to be in the future. SB 30, or the downzoning process and requirement, and the unknowns of taking this and working with option one are just not comfortable for me. In terms of looking at this, I do think, you know, I want to be fairly pragmatic here. So I struggle between option three. Option four offers the ability to actually know what we're dealing with, and if we do the survey, there is a cost there, and we are trying to minimize costs. So the balance of a lot of factors is going in, and also tearing me in a couple of different directions. Option two, we should do anyway, and I think implicitly we've been deciding to, but not in lieu of the others. But, so that's on its separate work stream, and I embrace doing that and really investigating these other sites. So I'm, for me, it's between option three and four. Four offers, and I do, frankly, I admire the effort that the planning commission put in to analyzing the situation, and really want to make sure that, you know, the questions they asked, and, you know, they were all in consensus around that. I take that very seriously whenever I see that in town. So to me, I'm not supportive of option one. Option two does needs to happen. I think, right now, we don't know the timeline for option two to play out, and the cost for it to play out, so that's kind of taking a new direction. And I think pragmatically, now is not the moment to do that. So for me, it's between option three and four. If we did three, I do think we might want to say something like, like giving respect to the, whatever we want to call it, the easement for the field. We'd have to recognize, we have to figure out what to do with the ball fields, and just giving respect to that, to any easements there, yeah, while we're figuring out where 2.48 acres is, that would help me get more comfortable. So I'm between three and four. So what I have written down here is Mary supports option two. Helen, I think three, if you had to put your finger on the scale, I'll let you confirm, because we have to go back and forth a little bit on this, we're truly divided, and I think we're aligned on many concerns, that's the good news. I think we have to figure out a way to get to leaning toward one way or the other, so the staff can be effective. Craig, you're at option one, with some additional language for protecting the ballpark. And Rebecca, I think you ended up maybe three, maybe one, is that accurate?
Yes. And I just wanted to comment on the option four, when I kind of reread what the planning commission had written. I don't think they had the benefit of all the work that Nona Chiarella wrote. So the idea that we needed to hire, that they felt that we needed to hire a surveyor may not actually be necessary because of what Nona has done. And then their second recommendation is actually pretty much number three, kind of the idea of actually formally speaking to HCD, or in their case, writing a letter, but I think it'd be more effective. So I'm not sure that four is really necessary, but I'm definitely deciding between one and three.
Yeah, and Helen did that.
I actually, after hearing Vice Mayor Taylor, you know, I am very, I know lots of people are not worried about builder's remedy, but I'm more worried about the cost if we get a lawsuit in, and we are being watched. So I actually appreciate Vice Mayor Taylor, because of the monetary, you know, if we get sued, we are bankrupt, right? Is that accurate?
We don't know.
Okay.
I actually will have comments on that later.
Okay. So in Saratoga, for instance, they've had 20 builder's remedy projects come in, right? Because, and they didn't get certified three different times when they submitted. So that's like a poster child of what could happen to us. It hasn't happened because of the cost of our land, and because we have such, our building code is so strict and stringent. But I do, I actually, you know, I was, I appreciate, I would go with what council member Vice Mayor Taylor said, with the constraints on the baseball field, because of my concerns about the financials of the city. So switching somewhat, you know, I would approve the two zoning ordinance amendments, and approve the rezoning with strict language around the baseball field. Thank you.
I would like to make a comment on the builder's remedy. I think we are trying to make sure that we're financially responsible, however, there's a balance. There should be opportunities to get feedback on where we are, and I've always said I'm uncomfortable with the viewpoint that because HCD might have an issue, we should just move forward and zone such a premium parcel in town. So for me, I think the advantage of option three is enabling staff to have a discussion, have an explanation. I think it's very clear that we can demonstrate, to me, and others will disagree, but in my viewpoint, we're truly struggling with an unexpected situation where we do not have 2.48 acres. And trying to work through and show good faith engagement, I think option three may allow us to have some insights there, and, you know, it is what should be fair. I don't want to set us up to be thinking that every, every potential action will happen. Let's be realistic here. I don't think we're going to be in a place where we can't demonstrate good faith attempt to comply. What happens after that, we, anything can happen, I'm not saying we will not get these issues, but I urge people to just focus on what are we prepared to defend and explain? And I think, I'm personally thinking we can defend the viewpoint of at least option three. But I still circle back with, the planning commission did seem to want actual numbers, and being able to proceed with option two regardless, and see where we can end up on option four, I could understand that. But where I'm leaning out of pragmatism is more option three than four. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'd like to speak. So my concern with three is, I feel like we're kicking the can down the road. There's a chance that HCD will take it without us actually zoning land, and just take the definition of a zone. Seems pretty unlikely to me. And I guess my question to the rest of you is, say we do this, and say we get a meeting with HCD in a month or two, and they say, nope, you got to zone it, then are we going to be right back here and do this whole thing all over again? Because that's my concern, is it feels to me like we're churning, we're churning staff time, we're churning the community's time, versus, and the longer, I'm less worried about, like, is getting sued for 100, you know, like, HCD applying $100,000, like, that seems totally unlikely to me. But builder's remedy and lawsuits from YIMBs, those do not seem like unlikely events, and they affect our entire community. And I'd like to see us close that out, and then let's pursue these other things. I'm struggling with the, well, if we do this, then we might not be able to unzone and all this other stuff. And first of all, zoning is our choice. HCD has nothing to say about zoning. All they can say to us is, they can say, we're going to decertify you because you changed the zoning on this property, but they don't get to define what our zoning laws are. So I'm not worried about us upzoning or downzoning, unless the state at some point decides to write new laws, but I think that's all well outside the scope of what we're trying to deal with. So I feel like one is the practical solution for dealing with this, and it's a bunch of hard choices. And three, just like I said, feels to me like we're delaying the inevitable, and that's even more costly to the community.
Well, I disagree it's inevitable. I mean, that's what we're talking about, and the community has spoken pretty clearly with trepidation around just conceding to the HCD request, which was based on inaccurate information in retrospect. So I don't feel at all that it's kicking the can down the road. I think it's looking to see what we can do in an unexpected situation, from my perspective. And, yeah, we'll see where it goes, but why make the conclusion today that it's inevitable that it will work one way or the other? I think it's premature, this is a pristine parcel, and we should be careful about it. That's where I'm coming from. Rebecca, do you have further?
Could I suggest maybe even a slightly different alternative? That would be that we did move forward with option three. We corrected the note two language to make sure, however, the easement would work in terms of making sure that it's specified that we will not be removing a ball field or putting housing on a ball field and its parking lot. But at the same time, and thus we give permission to the staff to go and meet with HCD to discuss this, to see whether it's adequate, and at the same time, we go ahead and approve option one in the event that the meeting with the HCD doesn't go the right way. So then we've kind of covered it, so we don't have to revisit this at all. The rezoning is done in the future, but it just delays it by a couple months, say. So we move forward, we try to get it through without rezoning the property, while including protections for the ball field, but in the, but we've already moved ahead that if necessary, we've done option one.
Rebecca, what's the advantage of having the backup plan tonight?
Not having to revisit it again, because it's just, it's very time-consuming.
I have to say that in any negotiation, if you know the other side has a backup plan, and you articulate it, that's where you are. So I think exploring option three, the backup of option one, is essentially going to end up with option one, which I would not agree with.
I would note two things. First of all, it sounds like, correct me if I'm wrong, that we have three of us, I think, who are saying we are willing to vote for rezoning tonight.
Meaning?
Option one. I think that's what I just, I know, none of us, this is a terrible vote, terrible, terrible vote. My other note would be, because of our parking issues across town, you know, we're trying to, like, I wish we had money for parking management, I would not include the parking lot in that because restriction, because in case we need to use some of the parking sometime to do a shared parking usage for the affordable housing, potentially. And, you know, to encourage, hey, Little League, please incentivize people to bike, people to walk, give sodas out for people who carpool, please, 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 let's come up with better, you know, charge for parking for people who aren't doing it, and all the money goes to you guys, right? So, anyway, that was my friendly comment. Thank you.
Right. Mary, I'm going to check in with you, if anything has heard changes your view, or if you have additional comments.
Well, one of the, I mean, I did want to say that the communication piece seems to be missing, and it has been missing from this negotiation all along. I don't see why we're not sitting down with HCD and with our representatives, and all of us, not just, I, my only edit of three, when I did it, was to take the word "might", I mean, out of the logic. We need to get a resolution with HCD, and we need to use the power of logic on them, and honesty, and wisdom, and all the good things that we have been bringing to the table all along. And we just need to be able to sit down and talk it through. And I think the council needs to be as involved in that as staff is, maybe more, because we're going to have to get representatives and so forth, the state, involved in getting us through this, I'm pretty sure, and protecting us. We're looking for protection. And we just, you can't get that without letting people know the situation you're in.
Yeah, I mean, I've been reaching out to some of our state representatives, and so far haven't gotten the time of day, but hope to soon. And so that is going to happen regardless. So Mary, are you, have you changed your viewpoint on option?
Well, I'm still on two, of course, and everybody seems to think two is inherent with the whole thing, but I guess I don't want to get the staff running after a whole bunch of other things at the same time, and I'd really like them to get number two done.
But Mary, my question to you is, if we all agree, and I think you've heard other people saying option two should be pursued, if that were the case, do any of one, three, or four make sense to you, or would it only be option two that you would support at the moment?
No, I was just saying that three, if I can get rid of the word "might" out of three, I would feel pretty good about that. And if we put the staff and the council to work on the problem, I think that would be, and I know there are people in the community who would be willing to help too, I could go with three.
Okay. All right, so I think...
Actually, the only other thing I was thinking is, I rather, not, I mean, I come from a long family of baseball players myself. I'm looking at my father playing baseball here in the archives, but at any rate, I feel even stronger about those trees than I do about the baseball park. So if I were going to put a stipulation on something to preserve, I would, I would try and get everybody to remember, we want to save those trees. Anyway.
Okay. Um, all right. All right, so right now, I'm just wanting to reflect back. Mary, is every, is there anybody that disagrees that option two should be pursued as directed in prior meetings? I'm not seeing any.
Two is good.
So two should be pursued, but not as the only thing that we're doing. So then we do have to choose option one, three, or four. And where I have people on that is Mary's a yes on three. Potentially Helen is leaning toward one now. Craig wants one. And Rebecca, I don't wanna put words in your mouth. I mean, you said three with a backup plan for one. What do you think of my concern that you've laid your cards on the table? I think you don't win that discussion.
Makes sense, given that we're public, yeah.
But I think I would suggest an alternate similar to Rebecca's, but a little bit flipped around, which is we do one and we do three. In the sense, we approve it, but we go talk to HCD to tell them what our intent is, which is to move this zoning to other locations. Which we've already said in the sunrise provision, that's what we wanna do. But to be very explicit to say, look, these are the two sites we're looking at. They're gonna look like this. Because, you know, if they're gonna say no to that anyway, then we're still gonna be back at one. So I'm just struggling with, one, the unintended consequences to me don't seem directly relevant. And I appreciate that, I mean, the biggest concern I heard was this, you know, what do we do about the 2.4? They somehow say, oh, well, you gotta show us 2.4 somewhere else. Or if they were to really crank it up and say, you gotta show us seven, that would be, you know, I mean, that would be unacceptable. But I think we need to move ahead. So I'm still, unfortunately, in favor of one, even though I don't like the choice.
Can I actually ask about that? Because I, you know, I think it was Karenowski, I'm not sure who it was, who raised the point about if we are rezoning a seven acre site with 50 units. The, you know, the equivalency Stanley Low is saying, it's a private builder though, is saying he would do, you know, I'm not sure he's saying extremely low. I think he's doing low income, he said, for 50 units. And it would be two, I think it's two something acres at Village Square. Would that, even though it's 50 to 50, it's not very low. Is that enough of an equivalency? Do you think HCD would accept that? Or is that a problem in the seven acre problem?
Oh, go ahead, Karen, if you.
Yes. I think that, I think that they would accept, they would accept a unit count that's similar. The closer you got, let me just back up. The state's mindset is housing opportunity sites. So their mindset is on the acreage. However, they are getting more sophisticated and looking at what's actually feasible and what's actually going forward. So I think it would work on a slightly smaller site if it could demonstrably be a better site. Does that answer your question?
It does. One more question. Potentially, the, I mean, Stanley though, what the housing ad hoc housing element site committee came up with was 50 below market rate, 25 market rate. I assume that would then be eligible for a density bonus with that makeup. Is that accurate?
It would require, it would be eligible for a density bonus.
Thank you.
And the other thing Karen mentioned was if you combine the Village Square and the Christ Church, I mean, those, that acreage together, then I think that we need it, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I am trepidatious about the idea of thinking that while it's logical, because I do agree it's logical that we can do option one, I do not think it will play out the way we are projecting it. And I'm not, I'm not of the mindset that I need to hurry this. Option three to me has one or two additional steps, and then we'll know where we are. It's not a recipe to go spend enormous amounts of time and money at this point. But I do think that option one, if we get that wrong, and I, as a lawyer, I'm looking at the language and I'm seeing that it applied in ways that, you know, might not be intuitive to me anyway. And I don't, I don't take the comfort that we will practically, even if the language and the law is read out the way we want later, I don't think practically speaking, we're gonna be without pressure to do something there from a whole host of other community constituents. So that's where I am. I mean, we can go through and take a, another poll here if we want. It sounds like there's a couple of people in favor of option one. There may be a couple of people on option three. And to be clear, option one, I think you're considering to exclude the ball park. Like that is the option one you're thinking of, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think we might be at the point to make a motion. And then we'll see how it votes out. But yeah, absolutely. I think we need to protect the resource of a ball. I wasn't as hip on drawing a line, just that starts to get to be a surveyor, but protecting that resource and putting whatever legal language we need in there. I'm okay maybe sharing parking, but it's gotta protect the ball field. Like, I mean, the thing that's important to me is that we're not impacting the league's ability to use the ball field. So that, so I wanna be careful how we craft that language. But I guess I do, yeah, so I think it's important that that be part of one.
Okay. All right, and for option three, I know there's a couple of people that would do that, option one. So we can do a motion if someone wants to raise it or propose it and vote it out.
Could I ask just one more question? For Mark, we've spoken a little bit about the idea of talking directly to HCD. And one of the reasons we hired you was that you said that you had done that in the past in your relationships. You've had discussions with HCD. How do you feel in this situation, if we did go with option three, about our chances of moving HCD to agree with us to not have to zone the property yet because we're planning to substitute it with other property?
I think several things with HCD. One, we have to be credible that we actually want to do affordable housing. And you are saying that. Two, face to face is always more powerful than email. Letters right now. The experience I had with HCD was when I was interim in Sonoma, where we spent a lot of time talking with them on the phone, in person, and whatnot, going through our plan and everything. And we were able to get our housing element adopted in January 23 and approved in April 23. But it took a lot of work, not just, my work was minimal compared to the staff work working with them. But my belief is that working with them face to face, we have a better shot at explaining that we aren't really BSing them here. We really have a plan. We've had a lot of work done over time. People are committed. This particular piece, they kinda shot us in the foot on. Go about that too. We had it approved. A new staff person comes in and now it's not approved. As a prelude to that, I do have the opportunity that now I'm gonna work on this to set up a meeting, at least with the senators, district staff, to kind of put in motion our thinking to see if the senator would have any objection to that approach. But those are the reasons that I'm confident that it would be worth the effort to see them face to face.
And in terms of timing, we're at April 9th. Is it something that could happen this month? That you'd be able to set up a meeting?
Probably not April, but I would like to get it. What's that?
I was asking if there would be possible to set up an appointment in April. And Mark is saying May.
I think setting an appointment during April is very doable. Making the appointments.
So, yeah.
Being there, having an actual appointment, I'm not sure yet, not until we try. But we'll start trying. If you do that, we would start trying. Terrence and I would begin tomorrow to try to set the appointment. I would start to set up with Nicole in the senator's office. And then we would go there. Though there's, I understand the urgency on what you're communicating. So it's not gonna be, well, I think I'll do it in June. It's now.
I guess my feeling is that we should give it a shot.
Then why don't you guys make a motion for three? It's like you have three of you.
But I would like to have the language about the easement for the ball field kind of worked out.
So would that be approving the two zoning ordinance amendments consistent with the staff recommendation, provided that any existing easement on the RFI board would have to be factored into calculating or the placement of the zoning? I don't know. Terrence and Catherine, maybe you can help us.
Well, you're, in this case, it's an ordinance, so this is the introduction. So in between the introduction and the approval, staff could draft that, the language.
I would suggest that we do it tonight. That we don't make any substantive changes in between the introduction and the second reading. But I think it could be pretty straightforward. The language as it reads now, that note on the table, I don't know if we have a slide that has all the language. If we do, that would be great to pull it up. If not, oh yeah, there it is. So my suggestion would be to just insert a phrase, which shall, which shall exclude the deed restricted ball field, or maybe just the ball field if we're not sure if it's deed restricted. But, and just, and just put that in there. So it would read a 2.48 acre portion of the Dorothy Ford Park Site APN da-da-da, included in Table 6 to 6 of the housing element, which shall exclude the deed restricted ball field, shall be developed as high density housing, and et cetera, et cetera.
Rebecca, do you have any comments on that?
Seems reasonable to me, if you're agreeable to that.
Mary, do you have any comments?
Well, we're proposing, are we looking for a motion?
I just wanna know if the language that was just offered.
You mean, I can't throw in the trees too? Okay. Yeah, I mean, that's an improvement. I'm feeling slightly better.
Okay. So can we have a motion for that?
I would make a motion to move forward with option two and option three with the change to the language to include the information that the town attorney provided excluding the ball field in note two.
Okay, so Mary?
Am I seconding it?
Yeah, are you?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay. So then we have to do a roll call vote unless there's further discussion or amendment's offered.
House Speaker Flynn?
Aye.
House Speaker Humpy?
Aye.
House Speaker Walter?
I will support this. Aye.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Unfortunately, nay.
Mayor Hough though?
Aye. One. Sorry, is there? There's nothing going on there. And then in terms of the second reading, there were concerns about when the readings should happen. Because it is, you know, April spring break.
So this will come back, this will come back at your next meeting, which is in two weeks, with the language as approved by the council. We do normally put second readings on the council's consent agenda. But of course, the public is welcome to comment on that. And the council is also welcome to poll those items.
Any comments or concerns?
My only comment would be that hopefully in the next two weeks, staff will have made some progress on getting into HCD. So we have a better feel for whether or not it's reasonable as we've moved forward today.
All right.
I wonder, should we consider doing a subcommittee of people who just concentrate on nothing but trying to get legislators and HCD to pay attention to this problem?
At this point, I would want staff to take the lead on the outreach since I think our interim town manager has experience managing that. I'm sure Terrence does too. So I think that's something that could happen in the future, depending on how it goes. But right now, I'd let them take the lead to keep it efficient. All right, I'd like to move on. It's getting to be late, especially for Mary. And we are going to go next to, we have colleagues' memos. So the first one is from Councilmember Flynn. And it relates to creation of a safety task force. Now, to remind people of the process here, what we're doing is we're voting, if there's three council members that support bringing this forward at a future time, that's what we would do. We're not, you know, you can make high level comments, but I wanna keep it brief because I think by the time if we vote for it to come back, I assume staff would work with Councilmember Flynn to craft the more refined proposal as you would normally have in a report. I mean, not that there's anything wrong with this, but it's a little different.
Well, I support bringing it back.
Okay. I was gonna ask Rebecca, she wants to just give an overview.
I'll be real quick about it, because I'm sure everyone's read it. So my recommendation is to create a multidisciplinary safety task force made up of representatives from all our safety committees, other relevant committees, key staff members, town council, two town council members, and affiliated safety officers. And the task force would be tasked with reviewing, expanding, evaluating the proposed preliminary safety initiatives, developing a comprehensive safety framework and project plan. And then I have created a preliminary list and the appendix, which is very long. And the reason why I feel the need for a sort of an overarching safety task force is because when I just look at the list that I came up with, it doesn't fall into any particular committee per se. And it doesn't fall into any particular safety organization. So I feel like there's a lot of different initiatives happening throughout the town. And there's a lot of stuff that isn't happening throughout the town. And I feel like we, as a town, as we don't really have a public works department that typically would probably take care of this, we as town members need to come together and have sort of a higher view of looking to see what all needs to get done, figuring out what the priorities are to make us safe, figuring out who should be working on the various things, which committees should be moving forward with certain things, learning and understanding what the fire department's working on, the police department, our utilities, just to have an overarching safety framework developed. When I look at things like establish and implement a wildfire risk reduction buffer area program, you know, it's clear to me that I don't have a sense that who's, who might be doing that. Maybe the fire department is, maybe not. So I feel like we need to get a grip on all the aspects to make our town safe. And so that would be the mission of this task force. And so that would be the mission of this task force. It would not be a permanent new committee. It would be a temporary committee just to get, to create this list, to prioritize it, to figure out who's going to do what, and to monitor the activities. And then also, I'm hopeful that by putting this out to the community and having the community be participatory in defining how we are safe, we'll also, with the staff, will be trying to figure out the cost of all these different initiatives. And so by bringing in the community, we also get the community's support to move forward with figuring out how we're going to pay for these things. And we will need a lot of support from the community to figure out how to increase our revenues to cover a lot of these safety initiatives to make us safe.
I will go with questions that the council members have.
You are amazing, Councilmember Flynn. And I so appreciate what you have done. But when I read your memo, it's what I do for my job a lot of the time, right? This is like, and like, I already have a full-time job, plus I'm doing this job. And I don't know if councilmen, if we have two councilmembers that want to take on a safety task force. So because, you know, two, you know, and I also think that your cost estimate is low. It has, like, we have, oh, sorry, you're right. Thank you for the reminder. So, so the other thing, the other one thing is, where did you, I think, I can't remember where, your cost estimate for 20 to 30,000, like, I.
That's just for the safety element portion.
Okay, so just for the Half Moon Bay, we're spending about 200,000 right now, and my staff time, two staff members on staff, $200,000 on consultants to do our safety element. So that's not really a comment. That's more of a comment, not a question.
All right, Mary, any questions? You already weighed in, and you have none. So, yeah, I have a question.
I could just, clarifying questions. Yeah, no, I don't have any clarifying questions.
Okay, that's where we are. So my question is coordinating among different committees in town and having a safety task force. My question is whether you have a feeling for how this interrelates? Because some of these, with the current functions of the commissions and committees, and would you be open to working with the staff to kind of define it? Because I do see some of these things as being overlapping with town council authority, like we would need to approve the budget and that type of thing. And I don't want to read intent in here. Is it your intent that you would work with the staff to figure out where the line between town council, full town council, like approval, works relative to sorting out and, you know, creating the options? Because I read this as a coordinated effort to create options that then go to commissions or town council. But I want to make sure that's consistent with your expectation.
That's why I kind of put in, number two, was whether or not the council wanted to set the priorities in advance. It's, again, it's a little, at this point, we just kind of decide whether we want staff to go and spend a little bit of time figuring out how this might work. You know, and then it would be up to town council to decide if this comes back, if they did want to be more involved in terms of making that decision and prioritization.
That for now is my question. So I think public comment. There's no one in the schoolhouse here, and Dale Fow has his hand up. Go ahead, Dale.
Yep, thank you very much. I'm actually not supportive of this maneuver. I think it's a great idea to create ad hoc cross-disciplinary committees to, say, tackle the safety element. Or, for example, to tackle the Alpine Road widening. Because in my experience, just creating another committee creates just additional bureaucracy. You don't necessarily have the people on that committee who are going to know the details of a lot of these things, and to go investigate them just duplicates it. If you take an ad hoc committee comp, you know, to attack the safety element, for example, there will be volunteers from each of the various committees in town who have experience in the safety element and have an interest in actually getting it accomplished instead of circling about and trying to find answers. So again, I think it would be a bureaucratic mess. I would prefer that the town council review the priorities as put forward, for example, by the EPC and by the other safety committees, and then by prioritizing those and giving the committees their work. And if there is something that's multidisciplinary, like the safety element, committing, creating an ad hoc committee for that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I see no other hands raised at this point. All right, so we can bring it back for discussion, close public comment, and bring it back for discussion. So comments, Mary, you already gave your bottom line. So do you have any substantive comments now? Can't hear you, cannot hear you.
I tend to agree with Dale that it needs to be focused on the safety element and then use the expertise of the different committees rather than trying to reinvent the wheel. But I think anything we do in this line will help support the committees and make them feel more effective.
Thank you. You know, I came in with my comments early apologies. I, you know, I am concerned that creating another committee will not help, you know, will not help our safety. You know, we need a point of contact, whether it's staff or whether town council members want to take it on to drive it forward. It's, you know, it's a lot of work.
Well, first of all, I'm going to echo Helen's comment. So thank you very much for putting this together. There's a tremendous amount of thought involved in it, and so I really liked that part of it. I agree that I think what we need to do is sort of review, particularly a repentance, which is quite long and detailed, but sort of review it for priorities, and maybe that's a subcommittee, the council, that could work. You know, we could work together to sort that out and then figure out sort of how they fit. Because I'm a little bit with Dale. If we just end up with, you know, one person from each of our current committees, we just end up with another committee, and I don't know if that helps. Whereas if we can go through and say, okay, we talked to Woodside Fire, and we've sort of come up with the priorities, and we've talked with staff, and between maybe a sub-council and staff working together, we could narrow it down. Because I think it's also, it's too much for right, I mean, it's a great list to have around. It seems like it's too much to do right now. But I'd love to try to prioritize it so we can say, well, let's knock off the first five things or 10 things to move forward. So I'd be okay bringing it to another meeting, but I think at that meeting, I'd be looking to try to bring it into more of a, you know, council subcommittee to work on the priorities. I think that's where it'd end up.
Safety is really important to the community, and I do think the things listed here as goals, many of them make sense. I do want to keep things a little simple and tailored. So my, I agree that if, I'd be more than happy for there to be a more focused proposal. And then as that gets started, maybe there's a way of extending the scope as we move into the safety element. And then there are opportunities to have specific things that are coordinated amongst different committees. But I think we're going to use this as kind of a roadmap for what are the potential things we need to be moving to next as we get through different items. So I don't know if you'd be comfortable with, you know, breaking into part one, you know, and working with Mark to figure out what that is. If it's a subcommittee of the town council, that could be very helpful. But, you know, it's, we're trying to focus this year to get a lot done. So what are the top five? What are the, and what would you task a cross-disciplinary committee or a town council subcommittee with? I'd be more than willing to have that come forward.
I guess my couple of comments would be that I didn't really mean for the safety task force to be the experts in everything. To me, it was more just an idea of creating this list. You know, I have a big old list, but I'm sure if we talk to every committee, they'll double the list. You know, it's just a matter of creating that list of potential initiatives. That was kind of more my idea when I think multidisciplinary. What is geological safety? I'm sure they have things that I missed. At EPC, I'm sure they have things on it. So it was more an idea of kind of using the multidisciplinary task to sort of generate all these ideas of what we need to think about for the future. Less so about doing the work, if you will. I'm not opposed, pretty much what I put in two was the council should be involved or make a decision about being involved. So I'm completely on board with the idea of a town council subcommittee as the first step, for sure. I think that's, that seems really reasonable. I think if we bring this back, we might want to think in terms of having two of us actually work with Mark to develop it further.
I mean, I'd be, I'm willing to be your Brown Act buddy on this, if you want to do that. Because we can't actually create a subcommittee, right? Because we didn't agenda.
Not tonight.
Okay, so I could be your Brown Act buddy, but we're not really a subcommittee.
This is coming back to another meeting to be discussed. And what this has already done and tee it up may be to be a more efficient discussion at that time. But we will have another ability to agendize it and properly set a subcommittee.
So let me just check with Mark. You had said originally that if this comes back, you would want to spend time working on it and not come back till actually towards the end of the fiscal year. But we're kind of talking about something slightly different, the idea of having, creating a subcommittee of the town council to then further develop it. So I just want to get your input on the staff's component of the, because colleagues' memos, it's a little awkward the way it works.
I think the council can take the action at once. What I would see is basically be myself helping work on whatever comes back to the council. I wouldn't see engaging other staff. I think it's really figuring out the framework of what you want to do. And I made notes on what everybody said, that kind of thing. I'm not, this is not ready for the primetime, involving the kind of staff. Questions?
So what it's.
Those are things to check on, but I think I would keep it with myself at this point. There is implications in that, but I think if you send it back to me, that's how I would approach it. Your call, how to do that, not mine. Two-person thing.
So without a formal subcommittee, if we vote to bring it back, Craig and I could work with you to kind of rethink about how we should bring it back. Is that what I'm hearing? Is that how it should work?
So. Yeah, so is there more discussion or are we ready for a roll call?
Should we get a motion, right?
Yeah, I guess you can have a motion to bring it back and then add whatever you want to.
Yeah, so I think the motion is that Rebecca will work with the town manager and her Brown Act buddy, whoever she chooses, and then we'll bring back an item for a future agenda on public safety.
Can I second? Yeah, I second.
Okay, roll call vote, Councilmember Flynn?
Aye.
Councilmember Haffey?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Haffey?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item on the agenda is a colleague's memo from Councilmember Walter on firewise communities for wildfire safety. So I'll offer to Councilmember Walter to give us an overview of what she's got in mind.
Right, obviously, I'm not the liaison for the wildfire preparedness committee. But I have noticed, and I do appreciate what the wildfire preparedness committee does. But I would love more outreach into the neighborhoods that are not firewise at this point so that we have, you know, tried, and it takes, it's a commitment, you know, two to, one to three years. The firewise certification state agency is a little bit overwhelmed, is what I've been told. So it will take some time, and it's a lot of work to get the neighborhood certified. But I do think, you know, we are not firewise across town, and I think it would help to make us more resilient overall. So I would, you know, I know they're doing it, but I would ask that they would do it more, you know, for more outreach and more like, and that we would have this on our agenda so that we could advertise it, et cetera. So I hope that makes sense. I welcome comments, yes.
Any questions?
I guess I do. You are asking for a joint subcommittee, I guess, is that? Or between those two committees, or just to have them both work on promoting firewise?
I made, I wrote this a while ago. I didn't submit a newer one. You know, I think that it makes more sense to have the fire preparedness committee working on it, probably. You know, EPC is busy on other areas. Mary, you're the liaison, so if you have any thoughts on that, you know, to set up, you know, do pop-ups at the library, for instance, or, you know, try, you know, or at Roberts or something, kind of idea. But anyway, I'd love to hear what you guys think. So probably one makes more sense.
The other question was that Epic and WPV Ready have been kind of involved in working on firewise communities. Are they, I know, blanking on her name, but she's got health issues, so.
Selena?
Selena, yeah. So I don't know if that's kind of slowed down the projects or the work, or.
She has been sick. She is back at work. So they have been working on it. They have been working on it. But I just feel like there are neighborhoods in our community that don't know about it and are not involved, and somehow we're missing those neighborhoods. And I don't know if we, you know, that's why I wanted to bring it up. And, you know, fire is a landscape scale issue. So you're only as safe and as resilient as your neighbors are. So to make, you know, to have it more townwide.
Again, colleagues' memos are so awkward. I mean, it seems kind of nutty to bring this back to then tell the wildfire safety or preparedness committee to go and put in more time on the firewise. I mean, so I don't really, I don't understand the structure. Why, do we really need to go back?
Do you have questions? Craig, do you have any questions?
No, I think I'll save the discussion.
Okay, Mary, questions?
I guess my main question is whether we've talked to the wildfire safety committee and the emergency preparedness committee before we bring this to the town council.
And again, I'm not the liaison, and I haven't had time to talk to you, so no.
Yeah, yeah. I just think that that's the first step, and relatively quick one. This is a big deal for me. I'm big on firewise. We did it with the Western. It's been a success. And they're not really keeping up firewise, but the fact is, people are doing it themselves. And so you don't have to wait for the agency to actually be doing something. actually be doing something. So I think it's absolutely essentially essential to get it done and get it out to all the other communities.
Was that a question, Mary?
The question is, why didn't you ask for somebody else to go in with you on your, on your colleague's memo, because then we could actually do something.
Well, because I'm Brown Act, you know, I had mentioned it to Rebecca, so then I couldn't talk to you.
Okay. No, I mean, I'm not talking about me, I'm talking about, just, it, one of the ways to get around this awkwardness is to have two people on the colleague's memo.
It, it, it's not required. Anyway, let's keep focused on what we're trying to do, is determine whether to bring this forward at a future meeting. My question is, you say then do a subcommittee on this effort, a subcommittee of, do we know?
Again, right, you know, I'm open, because Craig and I now are a subcommittee, but we're, again, we're not part, like, we don't have wildfire as part, like, this is our structural problem that Rebecca was trying to address with her list. So, it's tricky with the Brown Acts. So, basically, I would love it to come back to council, and we decide on a structure to work with, you know, somehow, I, I don't know what we're gonna do, because we've got these three committees that, and because of Brown Act, it's very hard to put it through.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm certainly for talking about it, and giving it a structure.
Questions? Okay.
Questions.
Don't have any other questions at this point, we got to go to public comment. So, there's nobody in the schoolhouse, and now we have Dale Fow. Go ahead, Dale.
Yes, thank you. A couple of points. WPV Ready, which is a subset of Epic, really has been taking the lead on this, and through, through primarily the fire department, and it's, it's a grassroots effort, but they've been quite successful. They've gone from three firewise groups in the Woodside Fire Protection District area three years ago to 23 as of last week, and several more that are working on it. So the expertise actually resides within WPV Ready of folks who know how to fill out these forms, who can help people with their neighbors, you know, go around and get everything approved, and then get the approval process through, through the fire wires and get it approved. So, and if you don't know, we have two members of the EPC who were actually on the board of Epic, so there is a great, great cross-pollination there. So this is a, this is a, a whole area-wide effort, it's not just focused on Portola Valley, and that's probably a good thing, because there are so many, you know, cross-pollination kind of things between Woodside, you know, Ladera, Los Trancos Woods, and so on. So that's how it's currently organized. Certainly, you know, I think the various committees in town support it, but the effort and, and the communication has primarily gone out through, through Woodside Fire. I don't know what more you would like to do, but that, I just think that's important for you to recognize. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Bringing it back for any discussion on whether to move forward. Craig?
So I think I'm the liaison with wildfire preparedness, so it's okay, no worries. So, I, I concur with what Dale was, I was gonna say the same thing Dale says, so WPV Ready's actually been doing a great job of moving this stuff forward, and it really doesn't belong to the fire department, they're actually not the approving authority. So what I'd love to see is that we task W, the, what's, the wildfire preparedness committee with giving us maybe a quarterly report on progress, so that we, the council, can monitor it, but I'd be hesitant to get more people in the mix. I mean, we can certainly ask WPC to sort of, you know, help make suggestions to WPV Ready, but they've been moving this stuff along, and it, if, if the neighborhood isn't ready to go, you're not going to force it. I mean, it just, it, this isn't really a top-down kind of process anyway, so I, I'd be in favor of getting some kind of report regularly back to the council, so that we can keep an eye on it, and then if it's, if we're not making progress, that, that's, I'd be comfortable with, but I'm not sure I want to assign this task per se to them.
I appreciate that idea, and I absolutely support that, and I would be fine with that.
I guess my only question, I mean, I support what you're saying as well, but would there be a role for WPC to do more promotion, to get more neighborhoods excited to go and work with WPV Ready?
Yeah, no, absolutely, and, and they've already, you know, they already sent out their tips and stuff, so I mean, I think there's already an avenue for that, so, yeah, no, I think that's right. I mean, having them, you know, work with, I just, I'm, I'm just hesitant that we don't want to put them in the role of, you're now responsible for getting, you know, firewise communities in the town, like, that doesn't sound right to me, but telling them, you know, please support WPV Ready, and use your megaphone to get more people involved, absolutely.
I don't see them doing that much, which is part of the reason I wanted to bring this forward, right? And I do feel like our channels, like, you know, the forum, but I'm not seeing, I'm not getting anything in the mail, I'm not seeing them, you know, at a pop-up, so that's one of the reasons I, I would like to see them doing other forms of communication.
See your WPV Ready, who's not, who are you not seeing?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not seeing either one very much, actually, personally, so.
Okay, so, it's a blurred line between the substance of giving direction to committees to give reports and bringing this back. Catherine, would it be appropriate for us to vote on bringing it back to, with a more granular proposal on which committees and what reports that we would like to see, or is, can we handle this casually with the liaison getting back to them?
Let's see, I, I guess I would suggest making a motion to bring it back or not, and I think that Councilmember Walter has heard the, the discussion, and that can inform the item that's brought back, if that's all right with all of you.
So you'd work with staff, I think, if I understand correctly, to bring it back, but more in the form of what reports you want to see, and, and what, what the liaison, is that acceptable?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Can we have a motion, then?
So move.
Second. Okay. Well, Councilmember Flynn.
Yes.
Councilmember Hocksey.
Yeah. Sure.
Councilmember Walter.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Taylor.
Aye.
Mayor Haskel.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. All right, we're gonna move on now to liaison reports. Thanks for the detailed reports, and I have read those. Are there other reports or comments that people want to make at this point on their, their outreach efforts? Mary, do you have anything?
Nope.
Okay, anybody else?
I do.
Okay.
Okay, quickly, Bicycle, Pedestrian and Traffic Safety Committee, they're worried, they have not seen the sheriff lately, so I wanted to relay that comment. We're still trying to get the crosswalk, to have the engineering consultant team come in and do a presentation, just to zoom for 10 or 15 minutes to that, to them. Also, PB Palooza, they need volunteers. And then for EPC, there was a discussion of the AM radio ownership plan, and they're work, you know, continue to do their great work, thank you, EPC, I'm at, and, and Woodside Fire District, new fire truck arrived, yay, and the local responsibility area maps will be adopting the new maps, April 29th is the second meeting for the hazard, new map, hazard maps. That's, those are my reports, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Good work.
Right, unless there's any further discussion, oh, we, public comment, I see no hands raised online on public comment, so closing the public comment section, go ahead.
Motion to adjourn.
Hey, I assume we can just say aye, or do you want to roll?
Oh, we need to do a roll call, because I'm here.
Christine, close this out.
Wake up, Christine.
Yes.
Councilmember Hocksey.
Here, I mean, yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Walter.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Taylor.
Aye.
Mayor Haskel.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.